Good evening, welcome to the October 18th meeting of the Oceanside City Council. Welcome, welcome, welcome. We've got a great lineup here. I'd like to first ask our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim, Councilmember Joyce, Councilmember Robinson, Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation. Tonight we have Father Ray Evangelista from Saint Mary's Star of the Sea. Father Ray, thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor. In the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, our help is in the name of our Lord, who made heaven and earth. Loving Father, we ask you to extend your blessing upon us as we do our city council meeting. We ask you to send your Holy Spirit to be in our heart and mind to guide us, and also give us the strength to continue the good things that are happening here at Oceanside City. All this, we thank you and ask you to praise our Lord. Amen.
Amen.
In the name of the Father, the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Father Ray. Councilmember Robinson, could you please lead us in the salute to the flag?
Please join me in my pledge of allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, in the first and foremost.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you, thank you. So excited this evening. We have several wonderful, wonderful presentations tonight. First, I'd like to start off with our FACO Philam Cultural Association. Please come on down. I know Dory Harris, President, wasn't able to be here today, but she said her board would be here, board members would be here, so come on down to honor National Filipino-American History Month 2023. Thank you, come on down. Father Ray, too. We have a very, very vibrant, very, very happy Filipino community here in Oceanside. I don't know if you haven't been to one of their many events throughout the year, you've just got to catch at least one of them, and then you'll be hooked as well, because afterwards there's a lot of dancing, all right? Lots of dancing. So I do have proclamation. And it states, whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian Pacific Islander group in the United States, and a significant and integral part of our diverse Oceanside community. And whereas in 2009, Congress recognized October as Filipino-American History Month in the United States. And whereas the Filipino-American cultural organization established in 1976 is an organization whose focus is youth education, scholarships, disaster relief, and preservation and promotion of cultural heritage. And whereas FACO has a broad membership representing all regions of the Philippines, and whose role in the community is especially important in Oceanside, where Filipino-Americans have made vital contributions in health, education, the military, technology, government, business, and the economy. And whereas FACO works to celebrate the diversity of our community and foster understanding and appreciation of Filipino cultural culture by partnering with the Oceanside Public Library for the 22nd year, presenting the annual Oceanside Filipino Cultural Celebration, which occurred on Saturday, June 10th, 2023, at the Oceanside Civic Center, which was filled with music and dance performances, traditional dress, and arts from the Philippines and from the Filipino-American community. And whereas FACO celebrated its first performing arts celebration at the Sunshine Brooks Theater on October 1st, 2023, featuring FACO's cultural dance group and youth cultural dance group. And whereas on Saturday, December 16th, this is upcoming event, FACO will be celebrating its 10th annual highest awards and Christmas Gala, honoring outstanding Filipino-American professionals in the fields of the humanities, industries, youth, arts, and sciences. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther C. Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim the month of October as National Filipino-American History Month in the City of Oceanside, and urge all residents and visitors to enjoy the culture, history, foods, music, and dance of one of the most important communities of our diversity So I named just a few events that they have. They actually have more. They have picnics. I mean, all kinds of things, and always with that smile. And then also like, okay, you're gonna dance, right? You're gonna stay and dance, right? So who do I present this to and who will be speaking?
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. Good evening, good afternoon to everyone. My name is Lenny Pisco Garcia. I am the current Vice President of FACO, and I would like to thank each one of you for attending today. This is very important to us. And I would like to extend our invitation for you guys to join us on one of our events. The biggest event is on June, okay? So every June, we celebrate our Filipino Independence Day. So that's when Mayor Sanchez come in and enjoy all the food and the dances, and you guys as well can enjoy, okay? And again, on December 16th, we have our Hias and Christmas Gala. And we recognize outstanding Filipino-Americans that serves our community, so please come and join us. There's a lot of entertainment and of course, recognizing great people to serve our community, and we would like to continue that. And we would like to invite you also for our fundraising events, and that benefits all the scholarships that we do locally, and of course abroad in the Philippines. And again, thank you so much, Mayor Sanchez, for having us today.
Thank you. And there's one other thing I really need to talk about, and that is that they partner with the library to do classes in Tagalog. So, I mean, they really, really do work hard to keep the culture vibrant and active here in Oceanside. So thank you very much. And you wanted to say one more thing?
Yes. My name is Mr. Jonathan Nerva. I'm the Executive Secretary of FACO. And actually, today, October 18th, we celebrate the 436 years when the first Filipinos landed in Morro Bay. Yep. It's October 18th, 1587.
It just happened to be the best day to celebrate this, right?
And also, I just want to add one more thing. We also serve our senior community and for the Filipino-American associations. If you guys know of any Filipino-Americans that would like to join our organization, we are a nonprofit organization, and we do all our fundraising to benefit all of our community. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. We're gonna take a picture here. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, this is also extremely, extremely special, because I don't think, I mean, I feel honored to be able to present this. We have Chef Roberto Alcocer in the house with Vaya. Come on down. I hear you have your team. Your team is here, right? Come on down. They stopped service just for this, okay? This has never happened in the history of the City of Oceanside, to be the first restaurant in Oceanside to receive a Michelin star is fantastic. Really, really fantastic. Look Wow, wow. Okay, so Roberto, I understand that since, you know, way back, way, way, way back, this was your dream to get a Michelin star. That that was what was pushing you forward in this craft that you have. So let me give you the presentation, and then I will ask you to say a few words. Proclamation in honor of Vaya's Michelin star and two-year anniversary, October 18th, 2023. Whereas Vaya opened October 2021 in the Mission Pacific Hotel. And whereas Executive Chef Roberto Alcocer has been at the forefront of Baja Mexican-Mexico cuisine for over 20 years, and has brought his culinary expertise to Oceanside. And whereas La Familia de Vaya is a team of creative and passionate individuals, ready to welcome guests to a unique and memorable dining experience against the backdrop of Oceanside's beautiful beachfront. And whereas Vaya has warmly participated in the annual Taste of Oceanside event each year. And whereas in June 2023, Vaya became one of only seven restaurants in the whole United States to receive a Michelin star. And by the way, the only one for Mexican food. And whereas on October 20th, 2023, Vaya will celebrate, that's the 20th, that's in two days. I know there's something really, really special planned for that. We'll celebrate its two-year anniversary. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the City of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim today, October 18th, 2023, as Vaya Day in the City of Oceanside. Recognizing Vaya for the prestigious position it holds amongst Oceanside's culinary offerings, as well as the entire country, by the way, and congratulate Chef Roberto and La Familia de Vaya for their hard work and dedication to their craft. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. It's a big thing. And first of all, I want to dedicate this to my family. Thank you. Thank you for being part of this thing. For holding the fort at home when I have to be at the restaurant. I want to thank the team, all of these people that is here. Why? Because this is possible. The support of the owners of the boat hotels, the support of Hyatt Corporation for supporting this dream to be able to accomplish. The hard work that we put every day. Thanks to the City of Oceanside for hosting us. And believe me, I'm so happy. And I didn't choose Oceanside. Oceanside chose me. So, yeah. No, no, believe me, it's a long story, but it's a pleasure and it's an honor to be here, being able to put a little of work in Oceanside to make Oceanside a little better place for everybody. A foodie destination. And we are all here, ready to go for the second star. So we're pushing and we're working really, really hard. And that's the commitment from Vaya to this city. So thank you, thank you, and we hope to see you all soon in Vaya. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Roberto. And the only word that was left out of that was, you cook with a lot of love. Yes, a lot of love. And you can feel it here. I mean, I really do. It's great. So thank you so much. How many, how many people are up here?
Ah.
Okay, so this is the team, all right? This is fantastic. I don't know if we can all get, can you get us all in a picture? Yeah? Well, thank you, thank you so much. Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Wow. Hard to top that. But we actually have another presentation, and we have Latino leadership in the house. And I'd like to call forward Angel Ortiz, Brian Nevades, Shema and Miguel Navarro, Daniel Dominguez, Edward Becerra, Erica Alfaro, Gabriela Gumarro, Jimmy Figueroa, Luis Osaguerre, Nancy Licona, Natalie Sanchez, and Raquel Alvarez. Come No, it's hard to imagine that all of this energy is here at the same time, because these folks work so, so hard, each and every day. And so for me, it's just great to be able to do this. Probably have to do this as a separate event, you know, like next year, starting next year. I'm sure we can fill the house. So for today, I've got, and this is just really the tip of the iceberg. So I'm gonna go ahead and get started. These are certificates of excellence. And truly, it's in honor of National Hispanic Heritage Month, but really, we could have found any other reason, really, very easily to be able to honor all these folks that are here. I'm gonna go ahead. This is no specific order. Manuel and Shema Navarro. As leaders in Latino community, Manuel and Shema have dedicated their lives to preserving their Latino-Chigano indigenous cultural art and history through their car club, or Siempre Car Club. Manuel and Shema have worked with Eastside Neighborhood Association, Main Street Oceanside, Dia de los Muertos, Saint Mary's Star of the Sea, Noche Mexicana, and many other organizations and events in presenting lowrider car shows as an expression of art in everyday life. In addition, Shema has kept her historic roots alive through her Azteca dance troupe, Calpulí o Meyocan, as well as provide her leadership skills on the Oceanside Community Relations Commission. I applaud their dedication, diligence, courage. Thank you so much for everything that you do. Shema and Manuel. And this is, I mean, this is a dynamic duo, these guys. I mean, they're everywhere together, and they're everywhere, really, really showing pride for Oceanside. Jimmy Figueroa. As a leader in our Latino communities, Jimmy first faced many obstacles as a youth, conquering all, resulting in achieving a Bachelor of Arts in Political Science from UC Berkeley, and Juris Doctorate from Thomas Jefferson School of Law. Jimmy has served the City of Oceanside in many capacities, from being a mentor to at-risk youth through Vista Community Clinic Project Reach, establishing the Resilience Community Mentoring Program with Vista Community Clinic and San Diego County Probation Department. Two, Executive Director of Operation Hope, serving on the city's Police and Fire Commission, co-chair of the North County Community Leadership Team with the County of San Diego, and serving on the boards of Miracosta College Foundation and Oceanside Theater Company. I applaud, Jimmy, I applaud you. We applaud you for all the work. Thank you so much. Erica Alfaro. I hope you're taking notes here, because these are pretty fantastic people. Erica, as a published writer and author, Erica continues to share her story with our community's youth of the many hardships she encountered in achieving her dream of graduating from high school, and not only that, then continuing to achieve a BA from California State University at San Marcos, and a master's degree from California State University at San Diego. Erica is now an international keynote speaker and award-winning author. Erica, I know that you had, like, didn't even think that you could even graduate from high school, and you were challenged by many, many obstacles, and what you did is you didn't, you didn't just lay down. You said you decided to fight, fight back for your child, for yourself. And everything that you've done has just impacted so many people. Thank you. Raquel. Is Raquel here? Oh, there you are. Hiding? You can't be hiding. Raquel. Raquel Alvarez. She is President of the Oceanside Unified School District Board, and thank you so much for your tremendous work on behalf of our Latino community. Having worked with other parents at Garrison Elementary School, Raquel saw a need in her community for representation on the school board and ran successfully. Raquel has been extremely successful in reaching out to all parents and youth, addressing community needs at the school district, working with administrators and teachers, going above and beyond, 24/7. And I hear about that too, by the way. You take your work home with you. You never stop answering the phone. You care so much about the kids. Raquel, I applaud you also for all your dedication and work. Thank you for everything you do for Oceanside. Daniel Dominguez. Daniel. While working for Edison at the San Onofre Nuclear Power Plant, Daniel was instrumental in recruiting Oceanside residents to work at the power plant. By establishing a training program through Miracosta College, he helped prepare Oceanside residents for these livable wage jobs. In addition, Daniel now serves as Vice Chair on the Oceanside Manufactured Homes Fair Practices Commission, a quasi-judicial board extremely critical to thousands of Oceanside residents who live in our mobile home parks. Daniel, thank you so much for your contribution to Oceanside. Nancy Licona. Nancy, having worked as a school counselor at Vista Unified School District since 2015, Nancy saw a need in her community for representation on the school board and ran successfully. Nancy has provided academic, personal, social, and college career counseling to middle school students. She has facilitated classroom presentations and counseling groups determined by needs assessment data, coordinated 504 plans and SST meetings to ensure students are receiving the necessary support to access their education, and has been a member of the MTSS team and Instructional Leadership Team, responsible for analyzing attendance, discipline, and academic data to create and execute targeted interventions in collaboration with teachers, administrators, social workers, and outside providers. That's a mouthful. Nancy, thank you so much for contributing to our school board and to our school district. We're the, you know, we're really benefiting from your experiences at Vista. You know, you should be working here. No, but you are on the school board, and thank you so much for all your dedication. Angel Ortiz. Angel is a lifelong resident of Crown Heights, of Oceanside, living in Crown Heights, the most densely populated and economically challenged community in Oceanside. Let me tell you, it is the most challenging in terms of crime, in terms of opportunity, in terms of the density. It is the one community that really needs a lot of help. And Angel, growing up there, is giving back to his community. Angel first got involved as a youth participant of Club Crown Heights, rising to become a leader, advocate, and mentor in his community. Angel's community leadership led to his appointment on the Oceanside Community Relations Commission. Angel, thank you so much for your work. Thank you for representing Crown Heights community. Edward. I don't think he really needs a whole lot of introductions. You probably have seen Edward Becerra in many events. Edward has always supported advancement through literacy and learning, believing that books are a positive empowering way of impacting youth. Edward founded Education Begins in the Home, a nonprofit organization that collects and provides books to all at no cost. Edward has helped empower over 54,000 youth through books, increasing literacy throughout the community. Education Begins in the Home is at an average of five events every month. Edward, I don't know how you do it. Really don't. Thank you so much for what you give back to our community. Gabriela. Oh, she's not here? Gumarro. Gumarro Escarsega. Wow, Gumarro, I... I am so happy that you're in Oceanside, not Vista. Okay. Gumarro graduated from San Diego State University with a BA in public administration. He first began his leadership in business with the Vista Village Business Association, and then was given the opportunity to implement the Main Street program in Oceanside. Gumarro is now the Chief Operating Officer and Director of Business Development of Main Street Oceanside. Gumarro's passion is the preservation of our city's history and downtown, the heart of our city, through revitalization, support of our businesses, diversity, and public art, and at the same time, committed to our future generations. Gumarro, thank you for your leadership, for being a mentor to so many. Thank you. Brian? Brian. Brian Nevades. This is another one that's, I mean, these are, these are very deep roots here in our community. Thirty years ago, Brian's dad, Bernardo Nevades, wanted to help and bring hope to at-risk youth. Opened, he opened the backyard of his Oceanside home for a boxing and mentoring program. About three years ago, and following in his dad's footsteps, Brian Nevades established the Nevades Boxing Training Center in Oceanside on Coast Highway in partnership with his wife Sandra, who manages a business. Nevades Boxing has created opportunities to make boxing accessible to resilience program youth on juvenile probation, Project Reach youth from Libby Lake and Eastside, and to Oceanside High School students during the summer. Brian, I applaud your dedication. Thank you so much for what you give back to our youth, especially those that usually don't have very many friends or places to Luis. There you are. Luis Osaguerre, a lifelong resident of Oceanside. Luis grew up in the Crown Heights neighborhood, graduating from Oceanside High. Luis started dancing Ballet Fóclorico when he was 13 years old. Concerned about the safety of the community, Luis began teaching Ballet Fóclorico at his home, first to his siblings, then to youth in the neighborhood, which resulted in establishing his Oceanside Ballet Fóclorico Dance Troupe. The art of Ballet Fóclorico became a passion for Luis, who began traveling into Mexico throughout its 32 states, learning and perfecting dance techniques, ensuring cultural historic authenticity and professionalism. Luis now teaches the art of Ballet Fóclorico to students at San Marcos Unified School District and Vista Unified School District, as well as performing locally and internationally. Luis, I hope to get you here at Oceanside Unified. Hear that, guys? Luis, thank you so much. You also, what I didn't put in here is that for Noche Mexicana, almost 17 years, you presented, you provided us with Ballet Fóclorico, not only from here, but also locally, to share with everyone this wonderful cultural art called Ballet Fóclorico dancing. Thank you, Luis. Last but not least, Natalie. I like your last name, Sanchez. Okay. Not related. Natalie is a lifelong Libby Lake resident who serves as an advocate for her community. She is an active leader of the Libby Elementary PT, organizing parents to ensure the students receive the best education. She has helped students get to school via carpooling and volunteers with Lived Experiences, a nonprofit organization. In addition, Natalie serves on the Oceanside Community Relations Commission, providing her leadership on a very, very, for a very, very important Latino neighborhood, Libby Lake. Thank you so much, Natalie. Thank So let's do a picture. I wish I could give the mic to each one of you. When I realized they were 13, I didn't know who to cut, you know, I wasn't gonna do that. So thank you, everyone. Next year, we're gonna make it so that you all can speak at least one or two minutes, right? So thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you for all you do for our kids, our youth, our families. Thank Next is closed session report. Mr. Mullin?
Thank you. Council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss the status of labor negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association. There's no action to report under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next is our consent calendar item. Do we have any requests from the public to pull any items?
We do not have any requests from the public to pull any items.
There is a motion by council member Weiss and a second by deputy mayor. Please vote. Motion is to approve.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. General items, item number 10, adoption of a resolution... Excuse me, adoption of resolutions. Establishing the 2024 meeting schedule dates and times for regular meetings of the city council, Small Craft Harbor District Board, Committee Development Commission, and Oceanside Public Finance Authority. Introduction of an ordinance to amend Section 2.1.27 of the Oceanside City Code to maintain the ability of members of the public to address the city council on non-agenda items for up to three minutes and remove the option to file advanced written requests to speak on non-agenda items with the city manager's office. Adoption of revised City Council Policy 100-03 concerning public communications on off-agenda items to ensure consistency with the proposed ordinance. We have a report by Assistant City Manager Michael Gosman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Michael Gosman, Assistant City Manager. I won't reread to you all the things the mayor just mentioned, but basically, I'm here to request that we establish a meeting calendar for next year and we make an amendment to one section of the city code with regard to how a city council meeting agenda is run. So, as I mentioned, staff recommends approval of these recommendations, and the first is the city council meeting schedule. So, each year, the council must approve by resolution the dates and times of the city council meetings. We are recommending two meetings per month, except for July. Closed session items will begin at 3:30 PM, and general items begin at 5:00 PM, and public hearings are held at 6:00 PM. Council workshop meetings begin at 2:00 PM when scheduled. I do want to point out that there was one mistake in the written materials. The scheduled calls for a meeting on June 19th, which is a federal holiday, so I recommend we move that meeting to June 26th.
Okay.
So, you have this in your materials, but this is the proposed calendar for next year, except for the one change that I did just recommend.
Thank you very much.
And then, the last piece is the amendment of Section 2.1.27 of the city code. As you may be aware, the staff is implementing the city's first agenda management system. This has caused us to take a fresh look at everything from our staff reports to the various processes, looking for ways to streamline the meeting and keep things as transparent as possible for the public. One thing we looked at was the advanced written request to speak section, which is not something that exists in any other city, county, or special district as far as we could find. So, that would remove that redundant advanced written request to speak section. Speakers wishing to address the council can still speak on any item not on the agenda in the communications from public regarding items not on the agenda section. They will not have to sign up a week prior. They still must sign up before that section of the meeting begins. This would make us consistent with other North County cities and the vast majority of cities across the state. So, that is the... Sums up my presentation and recommend approval of those two items.
Thank you very much. Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
Yes, we have 10 requests to speak on this item.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Richard Newton, to be followed by Patrick Higuera, to be followed by Rose Higuera.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public, I urge you to oppose this recommendation to remove the advanced request to speak from Oceanside policy. I'm sure a lot of public policy gets tiresome to listen to. However, all of you have been given the honor and privilege to serve in your role as elected officials. Listening to the public is part of your job. The public forum is an important arena to discuss new ideas, find solutions, and compromises. Three minutes is not a lot of time to discuss an issue in depth. Allowing speakers to reserve five minutes to speak in advance is a good thing. Anyone taking the effort to reserve five minutes is someone who feels that an issue is important enough to go into more detail than three minutes permits. We should listen to them. I have here a table consisting of the last six meetings, including this one, of the number of advanced requests to speak, and we see that there's been a total of 10 in the last six meetings. That equates to an average of 1.67 advanced requests per meeting. Each advanced request causes an additional two minutes of speaking time. This equates to an average of an additional 3.3 minutes, or three minutes and 20 seconds per meeting. We're not talking about a lot of time. Why are we even having this discussion? We have spent more time debating this and discussing it with other people coming up than you will probably spend listening to advanced requests for the balance of the year, which is projected on this average to be 13.2 minutes. Clearly, this is not being done to save time but to stifle public comment and input on government policy. I have here page two of the staff report. We've seen yellow highlight. It says that, according to the staff, they recommend that removing this would make Oceanside policy consistent with other North County cities. To that, I say, who cares? We are our own city. We don't need to align with other cities. Every city has its own entity and has its own policies that are perfectly acceptable. But as long as we're on that... And furthermore, to follow up on what I just said, we should be a shining example of other cities. We should be proud to listen to what our citizens have to say and go that extra two minutes per speaker if required. But if we do want to emulate other cities, what I'd recommend is going in the other direction. I have here the City of Carlsbad policy, and you'll notice that they have the concept of a group representative. So, for agenda items, if you have four or more people speaking on an issue that are a group, they can coalesce and elect one speaker as a representative who is given a full 10 minutes to speak on that agenda item. If we're going to act like another city, let's do that so that people can have 10 minutes for continuity to go more in depth on a particular issue that is of concern to them that they feel they need 10 minutes. We can do the same thing. We have four people, they coalesce, one person is a representative who speaks for the others, and give them a full 10 minutes to speak. That would be the right direction to go into. Remember, democracy, as I've said many times, begins at the local government level. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Higera.
Yeah, so, I don't understand why you guys are trying to take away our amendment of free speech. You know, why is that? Do you not want to hear what the American people have to say, the American people of Oceanside, the constituents that hired you people to talk for them, to make decisions for them, to, you know, make... You know, it's almost as if you're going in the same route with the OUSD School District. You know, are you guys going to take this off TV next? Is that the direction you're going? Because you don't want to hear people, parents, talk about their city, their city that they're proud of, the city that maybe they grew up in or they've been here for 22 years? I just don't get why are you heading this direction where, you know, three minutes is not a lot of time? If someone has something really, really busy on their mind, what is wrong with giving five minutes? You give people up here that talk about the most boring things for 10 minutes, 20 minutes, about residential areas being knocked down and houses being put up. So, that's okay to listen for 10 minutes to, you know, oh, let's have a housing development put up here and this and that? But you don't want to hear about the gentleman who was here about a month ago talking about how the curbs need to be lowered over in the retirement area over there by where the soccer fields are at in Oceanside. So, you'd rather put him in the closet but continue to hear developers talk about nonsense and regulations and let's put up a 10-story hotel on our shores? But, you know, forget the people. We don't want to hear what you have to say because it's all about money, right? It's not always about money, people. It's not always about making the dollar. It's about what's doing right for the American people, the people that elected you to, all of you, to office. You really should listen to them. You really should. And by turning your nose up and taking that five minutes away, it's obvious, black and white, that you just do not want to hear the people of Oceanside. So, I strictly, you know, hope that you guys really think about this and don't take... Five minutes is not a lot of time. It's really not a lot of time. So, you should really think about that and keep it going.
Thank you. Rose Higera, followed by Joe Hill, followed by Patty.
Yes, I think that you should keep the resolutions the way they are, allowing people's freedom of speech. This is our Second Amendment right. It is given by God, and I think that you limiting people's free speech is showing contempt for your community and constituents and stakeholders that actually voted you guys in. So, like my husband said, OUSD has cut the KOCT filming of us, and they've limited us to three minutes to speak on 50 or more plus agenda items, and it seems like you guys are following in lockstep. So, that makes us wonder why. Why are you trying to limit our free speech and why are you putting these rules upon us? You should welcome the community that voted you guys in and be respectful of their feedback and actually consider it rather than trying to limit them. I think it's great that you have so many people here today that are civically engaged. That's awesome. I don't know why you would want to do this to the community and the public. We need transparency here and in the Oceanside Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hill.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. I sent you my comments via email, but in case you haven't read all of your emails, because I know you guys get a lot, a couple things. This actually is a tool in the toolbox for the public to use that hasn't been publicized enough to let them know what it's really for. When people have slides or media or videos that they want to show and talk about in their speech, you can't do it in three minutes. And the interesting thing is, I thought, well, maybe it's a workload problem for the city manager, but obviously, it's not because only since January of this year, there's only been 30 speakers. So, it is something that probably the public should know they can use to their advantage and not take it away because of some other reason. Also, I was kind of amused at the fact that we're going to try to conform to other cities around us when we don't do it on a lot of other things that we should, but we're going to do it on this. And then, my last point was, the workshops at 2 o'clock are still a problem in this city. Everyone complains. You hear it everywhere you go. People can't go to 2 o'clock workshops. I think they should start at 5:30 or 5:00, whatever is easiest for people to get to in the evening. And I noticed that was one of the changes, or one of the things you're going to vote on tonight. So, consider that when we have workshops. The workshops I have been to at 5:30 are well-attended. There's a lot of people there, and the ones at 2 o'clock don't seem to be attended as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Patty.
Good evening. I think it made you really special that you allowed this period of five minutes for the public. I think that's what made it kind of unique, and it allowed people in their busy schedule to be able, if they had something on their mind, to present it to you all. So, I would ask you to preserve it. It's really only per person, two minutes more. And I had the opportunity to watch Huntington Beach last night. I know it's not San Diego County, but they had public comments. After three hours of public comments, I turned it off and went to bed, let's put it that way, and it wasn't even finished. I'm sure the meeting went to at least midnight. So, I don't think that sometimes having 10 or 12 speakers or the couple five-minute speakers is asking too much because even... They had to have at least 60 speakers to go at least three hours, and they all had three minutes. It wasn't reduced, okay? So, it reminds me of when I went into, one time years ago, to the Bank of America, big old building, and asked a question of one of the people, and I was given an 800 number to go home and call. I said, "But I am here. I'd like the information now instead of going home and going through the process of phoning." In other words, if people take time out of their busy lives, as you know, to come here, I would think it would be good for you all to listen because they put you in this position. Also, it's coincidental, if you could show the letter, that this got on the agenda after a letter from Mike Blessing on the school board to City Attorney Mullen, telling him, FYI, how they reduced our speaking time at the school board. So, a matter of six weeks later, all of a sudden, it came to council to reduce our speaking time. So, I don't know what's going on there, but it seems like that the town, the board, the council, and everybody kind of works hand in hand. So, I think it's all aimed at reducing the speaking time that we put you in this position for. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Naught.
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Naught, 127 Cherry Lane. Number one, you, our council members and mayor, were put in your seats by the citizens, not the other way around. You didn't put us where we're at. We put you where you're at. This is our chamber. It's not your chamber. This is where it begins. We have the right of freedom of speech. We have the right of equal access. We have the right of equal deliberation. If you cut our time, it must be mandatory upon you to cut your time because that is equal access. Staff, if in their report, if you listened, did not give a background report on the origin of the five minutes that was brought forward. That was originally brought forward because, and I've been around for some time, as you know, as I think everybody knows, it was originally came from needing to organize groups or displays of extended information that needed to be conveyed. This is part of your job that we elected you to do. You are the pressure pedal. You are that steam valve that releases the steam when there's a problem in the community. You, we elected you to do that, to know when to release that valve, and that is where these podiums come from. Is that right to bring those issues forward? I agree with what Joe said about the public having access. We tried 2:00 PM for the public to take and have their meetings. It was great for seniors, but not for the rest of the community. I think we need to have access for the majority of the community after going through that experiment. We need to take and have all the citizens have, when you have workshops, unless there's a specific reason, it needs to be accessible to a majority of the citizens. So, the other side of the coin is, if you do try to limit times, be like the county. Allow us zoom input.
Thank you. Max Disposti, followed by Michael Richardson, followed by Sandra Martinez.
Good evening, council members. Max Disposti, I'm also a city commissioner for the Community Relations Commission. I actually agree with the proposal. There were just a couple things I would like to point out is that, while workshop, I really the center of the conversations in our community, give us the opportunity to reach out to diverse communities in Oceanside. As a community relations commission, we have focused on equity and accessibility to these conversations. I do believe that the city council, we can go over everything and have meetings for five hours when instead, we need to re-empower workshops. So, my point is, I'm okay, we're okay with everything else, but let's move the workshop in a time where our working-class people can actually participate. Our CRC, the Community Relations Commission, actually meets at 6:00, and we have plenty of seniors that came to voice their concerns about what they're going through. So, I think refocusing on the workshop that allows our community to elaborate, to speak, to present, to advocate, and to bring proposals forward, but in the council chamber, we need to move forward with assigned items so that we can all have a discussion but move... to move forward with assigned items, so that we can all have a discussion, but move forward and be active and proactive on the work that this council needs to be doing. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Michael Richardson, followed by Sandra Martinez, followed by Beth Barnum.
Here I go again. I just heard Mike Pompeo, the past Secretary of State, called it an invasion, Eric. If you don't want to call it an invasion, then you're in denial. And also, this morning, we heard from a retired Border Patrol agent that there's no way that those people coming off the, you know, being dropped off of the trains, there's no way they can be vetted. So, that's a lie, that they've been vetted. Now, on the subject of item 10, you want to reduce the amount of time that we can speak. You want to take away the five-minute rule. In fact, did I hear the staff report say that they want us to apply to speak a week ahead of time? Was that what was in that report?
No.
Oh, that's good. In fact, I'm hoping you won't take that away, but I want to further ask you to write in the ordinance that the mayor does not have the power to reduce the three minutes to two minutes, or whatever is at her whim. It seems to me if there's more people who want to speak, that makes it all more urgent. It means it's a serious issue, and you need to hear from every one of us. So, even if there are lots of your constituents here, who also are passionate about something, I think, I submit that you, if there are more speakers, they should be allowed to speak their full three minutes, and that should be in the ordinance, that it's not possible to reduce the speaking time below three minutes. Please, take away the mayor's power to muzzle us. It's un-American.
Thank you very much. Sandra Martinez, followed by Beth Barnum.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I assume everything's been checked through the Brown Act. I'm sure Attorney Mullen checked that out. But you know, when it comes to legal issues and legal matters, it's not about what you can get away with legally. It's about what's right to do in your duty serving the public. It's not about the Brown Act. This is about what's right. Now, the reason stated in the documentation that we're going to do this is to be like other cities, which someone mentioned, I mean, seriously, folks, we're going to do this because someone else does it? If someone jumps off a bridge, you're going to do it because they do that? No, we are our own unique city. We're not like other cities. I don't want to be like San Diego. That's why I live here. Carlsbad has a lot of their employees, including their city manager, used to be in San Diego. They're becoming much more like San Diego. I don't want to be like that. I don't think most people in Oceanside want to be another San Diego. And that's what this represents. So, my other question is, is this a situation like the Oceanside Unified School Board, where a board member, Mike Blessing, said, "We don't want to hear what you have to say," when they cut the public speaking minutes? Is that what the situation is here? Do you not want to hear what we have to say? Because if that's really the case, and you don't want to hear what we have to say, if you don't want to hear what your constituents have to say, maybe you shouldn't be here representing the public. Limiting public input and speech is the biggest threat to democracy in this country. That's why it's the First Amendment. It's not something that can be taken lightly and fooled around with just because you can get away with it. Don't do it. Just because you can do it, doesn't mean you should do it. And in this case, you should not reduce our time.
Beth Barnum, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. So, I mentioned to someone, I just started coming to city council meetings at the beginning of this year, and I mentioned how different it is than Oceanside School Board meetings. I was like, wow, they actually seem like they're listening. They allow extra time. Mayor, you've said before, you know, if you haven't signed up, please come and speak if you want to speak, excuse me, speak on an agenda item. I appreciate that, because of what happened at Oceanside School Board is a slap in the face to the public. And this is exactly what I see here. What you are doing is creating a slippery slope. You are telling me that you do not want to hear my voice. And I voted you in. I'm not going to repeat what everyone said, but I am highly disturbed about what I saw that Mike Blessing sent a letter, an email to you and to you, council member. So, that seems to me that this is planned. You shouldn't vote this through. I have lived here all my life, born and raised. My dad was stationed at Camp Pendleton. He decided to stay. I am embarrassed by what Oceanside Unified has done. I pulled my child and homeschooled them because of what they are doing. Do not become the school district. Todd Madison took a five-minute time, which you are trying to remove, to tell you guys what is going on in Oceanside School Board, in Oceanside Unified. I don't know if you took it seriously, but what I do know is that people watch, because I get texts as I'm in the meeting of people watching us speak. So, seriously, think about what you're doing. We will vote you out. We own this chamber. You are here because of us. And I'm seriously tired of rhinos. It is the biggest uniparty. There are no Democrats. There are no Republicans. You're all on the same page. Most of you are not speaking for your constituents. Prove me wrong. Thank you.
All right, that's it. Okay, to the council. By the way, we are not changing the three-minute for everyone. And my understanding, well, with KOCT, KOCT has a special relationship with City of Oceanside. We actually had a commission look to how to expand KOCT. At the time, we had a franchise fee with Cox Communications. So, it is a partner. Do we have any, does staff have any intention of bringing forward cutting us off from KOCT in terms of televising our meetings?
Honorable Mayor and Council members, know we've had no such discussions, nor would we intend to do that.
And I definitely want to commit to the community that I do feel very strongly that we need to continue ensuring that our meetings are accessible to the community via KOCT, or whatever Zoom we have. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you, Mayor. So, on this, we have to take this all together. Can we pass the council schedule separately and then have some discussion about the other part of that?
Yes, you have separate resolutions for each of the entities, but you could bundle them all up for the meeting schedule. So, for CDC, Harbor, council, et cetera, you could all do that as one vote if you wanted.
Do you understand that, Esther, or you want to do it all at one together?
I'd like to make it so it's easy for us to discuss.
Okay. So, let me, first of all, thank you for everybody speaking. One thing I do want to say is, and I have no reason to dismiss Mr. Gosman's reasoning, but this is a staff report that came to us. Nobody from this dais directed staff to put this together. He had a project to work on. I expect no ill will on his part to limit anything. He's making a recommendation to council. That doesn't mean that we haven't come up with our own thoughts and opinions as to what's being recommended. So, I do resent a little bit this thought of conspiracy and how we're all plotting up here to take away your rights, because we haven't had a chance to comment on a staff recommendation and how it works. Sometimes we direct staff to bring things back to us, and other times, staff has a project and they bring it to us. And because of Brown Act issues, we don't go around talking to each other and having meetings and conspiring to do things. So, I say that to say that I do want to make a motion to approve the schedule, as stated, the calendar. I do think that there is value in the five-minute, but I think we also, that can be used as sometimes a workaround, you know, to be honest, to get to talk about things that could be done in three minutes. So, I would like to limit the five-minute speaking. It looks like, on average, we do about three council session. I would say if we can limit it to five. First come, first served, five-minute reserved to speak. And again, remember, those are off-agenda items, so we can't address them anyways. We can't really speak to them. Sometimes we can give staff some direction to check with somebody or do things. So, I would do that. And I do very much like the concept that the first speaker talked about, where if there's a group of speakers that are of like mind, that we can, the mayor can allow them to have a speaker and speak for, I think that 10 minutes is reasonable. My understanding is we could do that now. I think that there's no reason we couldn't do it, but if it needs to be put into the ordinance, I would support that. I think that, I've been to many council meetings in other jurisdictions where that does happen. And to the one speaker's part about the two-minute thing, I think sometimes when we have that option, and the mayor uses it to allow a speaker to speak for 10, it saves that need to cut back the time from three minutes to two minutes. So, I think that is a good way to go. So, I'm not sure if I've been very clear on what I'm proposing, but...
Could we speak individually and then start making the motions?
Sure.
Okay. Because I do want to know, there was some input on setting the workshops more towards 6:00, 5:30, 6:00, rather than the 2:00, which I know we did that once, and we certainly did have a lot more people be able to attend. So, which, you know, where could we do that, or would that be something that we do separately as a separate motion?
So, the request is to have workshops at 6:00?
Yeah, if we wanted to make that motion...
Just put that in the motion, and we'll adjust the schedule accordingly.
Okay. And...
Can I make one point really quick? I'm sorry. I think if I understood you correctly, Councilmember Robinson, you wanted to permit the sharing of time, as was cited in the public testimony. That would require code amendment, because our code prohibits that. We would have to come back with that. And I do want to say, since I have the microphone, that the email that was displayed earlier, I think by Patty, that is not my email address on there, so I don't ever recall even seeing that. But if it was, I don't recall it, but I certainly wouldn't take Brown Act advice from a member of another agency, and I haven't, so...
Thank you. And I would like to let people know, because yes, I have been around, I don't know, maybe not as long as Mr. Knott. I'm just trying to remember here. But once upon a time, actually, our limit on comments was five minutes. We used to, the council, not me, I wasn't, well, actually, I guess I was on there at the beginning of the 2000s, when we were still meeting until midnight, past midnight, you know, trying to finish. That was one of the recommendations that ended up happening, was to cut the five minutes down to three minutes. And my understanding is this five minutes that ended up staying on, on advanced request to speak, wasn't oversight. It was supposed to be, because it was all the same. It was five minutes, comments, and it was reduced. There were several reasons given for it. When you're trying to wait around for an item to come up, and it's already midnight, and you're wondering if it's going to be continued to, say, the next day, or the next council meeting, it's a long time to, you know, it could be six hours that you wait, and you haven't been able to speak. So, the time was reduced to three minutes. There was no intention then to cut off access. And in fact, I do believe it has worked. We do have, I do see people end up leaving when we have a lot of people speaking. The setting, the chair, the mayor setting times down from whatever it is, three minutes, down to two minutes, is so that we can hear everyone, and not only on that item, but other items on the calendar. So, I am completely committed to making sure that we have complete access. We are treating people differently. This is not equal access to have under one, five minutes, under another one, three minutes. So, I do want us to think about that, that people who don't know about, you know, getting their act together a week before, gee, they can ask for five minutes. And sometimes, it's difficult to have four people, I think, was it three or four people that we had once for the five minutes, when we have other things that we have to discuss. So, Councilmember Joyce?
I had a couple of questions for staff. How many workshops did we hold over this past calendar year?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, I don't have the exact number, but I would say maybe sometime, something in the order of four, maybe five workshops at the most in any given year.
I think this year, I think it was only two, but I'm just asking for correction if I'm wrong. Budget and the housing.
It could be, but in years past, I have seen more workshops.
Okay. And then, between those two, between those two, we had one at 2:00, which was the budget workshop, which was, and correct me if I'm wrong, not attended. I mean, there was maybe two people, three people in the audience. And then we had a housing workshop, which I believe we started at 5:30, and there was not a seat in the house, standing room only. So, I am very supportive of changing the time of the workshops to at least 5:00, preferably 5:30, to allow folks to get off work and come over. The workshops especially are where we can have engaging conversations, that we're talking about the things that are really important. We always talk about important things, to correct, but the workshops especially, where you hear your council members' thoughts and the mayor's thoughts on those topics that we know are really critical, like we did with housing this year. So, that's the most important piece of getting this puzzle right for me, is to make sure that those workshops are at a later time.
No other lights. Maybe, can we take this one at a time? Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
We just had the planning commission interviews as a workshop, too.
Thank you. Not very well attended.
Well, and I would say, if we're going to move the workshop times, I would suggest, and, you know, because we're going to be, depending on what the topic is, we're going to have staff sitting here getting paid overtime, that we limit the total amount of time the workshops are going to be. So, we're not sitting here till 10:00, 11:00, midnight. Most of them should be able to get done in three hours, I would hope, so...
Could we do this one at a time, the workshop, something very easy? Can we do a motion? Yeah, that's where I was hoping you would go. So, you have a motion to set the workshops at 5:30? Is that what you said?
Yes.
I'd second that.
And approve the schedule.
And approve the schedule, except for the June 26 date? Do we want to do that?
Sure.
Okay. Is there a second?
You just said...
Okay, I'll second. So, the motion is to adopt the schedule...
Motion is to adopt the schedule as presented and amend the council workshops to be start time of 5:30.
Now, can I ask Councilmember Weiss brought up the planning commission interviews. Do we want to keep those at 2:00? Or do we want to also have them at 5:30?
I mean, I would say, it's cleaner to just do everything at 5:30, and then, I mean, we also might have planning commissioners that, I assume they work, too. It might be kind of us to do it at a time that they could make it without having it take off.
Yeah, but do we have... Yeah, but do, did we have two, or was it three applicants that were not able to make it?
Yeah.
This past workshop? All right, so there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, the next issue is the, is, uh, items on advanced request to speak. And we have, Councilmember Weiss?
I move that we leave the request to speak as it is now.
I second.
Do we want to put a limit on how many?
No.
We can have 10. Three? Right. So, yes, Councilmember Robinson.
So the other thing that we have to remember is, that's an off-agenda item. So if you have a five-minute, if you put in a request for a five-minute item, you shouldn't be able to go back and have another three-minute, a second bite at the apple. That's one thing I, I think is very important. If we're going to keep the five-minute, I'm not a fan of keeping unlimited number of five-minute requests to speak, because I can just see that being used to, for a number of reasons. I, I think, and the clerk has to process them, we are, the way we do them now, I believe, sir, they, a week ahead of time, is that right?
They file with the city manager's office a week ahead of time, because the city manager's office handles the agenda.
You know, I, I think having five, first come, first served opportunities to submit a, a five-minute.
Five? How about four?
You're, you're talking 10 minutes extra. What do you mean, no?
If, can I add?
Councilmember Joyce.
I think it's also, I mean, honestly, it is a little bit of a fairness issue. I mean, when you're talking about folks that are accessing this one lane to get extra time, so I definitely think we should eliminate their opportunity to do a second, a second, like an eight-minute thing, that's fine. The other thing that you brought up earlier, though, that I wanted to join you on, is I love the idea of folks being able to cede time to two other members, or three other members, and do one group comment for 10. I would say that we, I, well, the way I've seen is, everybody has to be present. So the clerk would call out the four names. If everybody's present, then they could cede their time and do one group comment. I don't know if that's what you were thinking when you were speaking about it.
Exactly. It's, if, and I, it can be four, I'm fine with that, if it's four or whatever, but it's just basically, if you have a group of people who have the same topic they want to speak on, and we get that all the time, you get 10 people for three minutes. It would be, I think, I, and I think it's a better presentation, especially when some of these are, it's a community of folks, and they can speak for 10 minutes, have one representative speaking for 10 minutes. I think they can probably express more clearly and in depth some of the issues that they want to bring to us. So if, if you want to say it's four or more people, that, that's fine with me.
Four people, so it would be one person of the four. They need to get three other people, is that what you said?
Yeah, basically, if there's.
Okay. So they have to, they have to be present, and they have to stay for the entire presentation? That's how they do it. Because otherwise, if they leave right afterwards, then that's not, they're not really speaking for them.
Right. But I don't know how, how it gets, I've, I've just seen it work, and it seems to work fine.
And that is during the regular time?
Regular time, the three-minute time, yeah.
Right.
So I'll have to prepare code amendment. I think I could bring it at your next meeting if you want.
So are we limiting the five minutes to the first four people?
I said five.
I don't think that was part of the motion that was seconded.
No.
We'd have to get a motion.
Yeah, no, we're, this is a separate motion. So, so we're working on that motion right now.
Leave the, maybe just the way the motion is, leave it as is, and, but let's add the, the group, I, I don't know, I forget the phrasing for it, but the, the sharing of time, you know? And then everything else, we can just leave it the same.
Will you consider a limit?
Well, I didn't.
Councilmember Weiss?
This group, is this just for off-agenda items, or is it for all items?
No, it's all items. It's not usually for off-agenda items.
That's why I'm asking the question.
No, I'm saying off-agenda items.
It's usually not, it's usually not for off-agenda items. Where I've seen it, it is on topic.
You're right. It could make sense. It could be a, a housing issue or something where, like, one of the things, a group of folks, for instance, on Avocado Street, want to talk about that project.
Yeah, it's an on-agenda items, where you can have a, an organized group.
But you could also do it for off-agenda items, too. We get a lot of times, we get off-agenda speakers that they're all talking about the same thing. We just saw it with the mobile home park issue, you know, and I think rather than have 10 people come up for three minutes to talk about their mobile home, there would have been a speaker in that group that I'm sure would have taken 10 minutes to represent that group. And that was an off-agenda item last council meeting, I believe. Thanks.
Okay, could you please restate your motion?
Our motion's the same. I'm not changing my second. I just want to keep the public comment as it is. If you want to add anything.
There is, there is a motion.
The, the motion I have right now, what was made by Councilmember Weiss and seconded by Deputy Mayor Keim, is to leave the five-minute advanced written request to speak as is. Was there an amendment to that motion? Because that's currently the motion that's seconded, and that's on the floor right now.
Okay, no other lights? Let's vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay, and as to organized, organized presentations, it would be for on-agenda items? Four people, for 10 minutes?
I would say four or more, but I, to me, it could be on or off-agenda items. I don't, I, I don't see why we would limit ourselves. And it's your, it's your call as the mayor to whether you would implement that or not.
Right. But I, I guess what I don't want to see is unlimited number of advanced requests to speak, each one 10 minutes.
No, we're not talking, it's not an advanced request.
If, if you are saying on off-agenda items, it would also have to apply to advanced request to speak.
But they would still be pooling, it'd still have to be three, four people pooling all their time together to one 10-minute slot. So they would, it would always be limited.
I've seen friends come together and stay, even though they had really no intention to speak, so that they can have the 10 minutes. I mean, it can be manipulated.
Four people stay, yeah, but they couldn't, they're not going to actually pool their time. It's a limit of 10 minutes for any number of people, four or more.
My concern is that we get five people times 10, 50 minutes on advanced request to speak.
No, they'd, they'd have to have four people for each 10 minute.
Right, no, I, I know, and that's easy to do. That is actually very easy to do. So my, my concern is, why don't we limit, can we put a limit on advanced request to speak in terms of how long? Do we want to have 30 minutes of that, up to 30 minutes of that?
I think that motion just.
I don't think we're talking about advanced request, that part's over. It's, that's not going to change.
Okay, so this would not apply to advanced request to speak?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, if somebody has already reserved advanced request to speak, they can't, they can't be part of any of these groups, because they can't have another off-agenda comment.
Right.
So I would make that motion. The motion would be to allow groups of four or more to sign up as a group for a comment on off or on-agenda items, with a maximum of 10 minutes to speak for the group.
At the discretion of the mayor.
All members would have to be.
Councilmember Joyce, would this be direction to the city attorney to bring back that code change?
Yes, yes, sir.
At the discretion of the mayor.
Well, I think it's a, technically goes to the clerk, so it would just be one of our operations of the meeting, right?
Well, the group, as if I understand the motion, the group of speakers would have to agree to be governed by this, right? So they're giving up time, otherwise, if there's four, four speakers, they could have 12 minutes.
Yep.
Four speakers could aggregate their time to 10 minutes amongst the entire group.
Correct.
Right, and they cannot then therefore speak again on that, on that topic.
Same thing, whatever that is, yep.
Okay, I could draft that, I think.
Okay, that's the motion, what he can draft.
Okay, is there, was there a second? Okay. No other lights? Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you very much. We have to cut over to time-certain items. Sorry about that 20-minute overtime, but we have item number 13 as a time certain. This is adoption of a resolution approving a historic permit to locally designate the property and single-family residents located at 431 South Nevada Street as a local historic resource within the city of Oceanside. The proposed project qualifies for a common sense exemption from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, pursuant to Section 1506-1 subsection B subsection 3 of the SEQA guidelines. This is the Willett residence, and the applicant is Larry Gerling. I want to go ahead and open this public hearing and ask disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff report only.
Yeah, no, no contact. Okay, with record reflect that Councilmember Joyce is not present, and so I'll ask him about his contacts when he comes back. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence on our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence on this item.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin with a presentation by Shane Elder, planner. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Shane Elder. I am a planner one with the Planning Division, here tonight to discuss Agenda Item Number 13 regarding 431 South Nevada Street. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H23-00001 to designate the property and single-family residents located at 431 South Nevada Street as a locally significant historic resource. The property is located at 431 South Nevada Street, on the corner of South Nevada Street and Washington Avenue, in the townsite neighborhood planning area. The land use designation is single-family detached residential, and the zoning designation is single-family residential. The subject property is listed in the 1992 Cultural Resources Survey as the Matilda and George Willett residence, and was built in 1928. The architecture is French eclectic style, and the property has been owned by multiple figures significant to Oceanside history, including George Willett, a local contractor who built notable structures such as the Bank of Italy building, and most likely the subject property itself with his partner Arthur Nelson; Harry Whitman, the last ranch manager of the Santa Margarita Rancho, and a city council member and mayor of Oceanside; Raymond Bernard Goodman, owner of several local businesses and vice president of the California Moose Association, who also helped organize the local moose lodge; James P. Sullivan, Oceanside council member and manager of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce, who helped develop the Oceanside Harbor; and Herbert Quodis Johnson, a local businessman and real estate investment manager, who served on the board of the Oceanside Chamber of Commerce. The subject property is a one-story asymmetrical cottage-style home with both French and Spanish detailing. The steep pitched roof is staggered wooden shake shingles with decorative red tiling, and multiple windows feature diamond-shaped panes. The exterior is covered in smooth cream-white stucco, and a decorative weather vane is affixed on the roof. The cultural resources report and historical assessment prepared for the property indicates that it is in very good condition. In accordance with Municipal Code, Chapter 14A, a resource must qualify as historically significant, consistent with the criteria established by the California Register of Historical Resources, to be deemed a local historic resource. As detailed in the cultural resources report, the subject property has been evaluated and found to be historically significant under the following California Register of Historical Resources criteria. Criterion B, association with a historic person or persons. As mentioned, the subject property is associated with a variety of historic persons in Oceanside history, including George Willett and Arthur Nelson, Harry Whitman, Raymond Bernard Goodman, James P. Sullivan, and Herbert Quodis Jr. And Criterion C, represents a significant design or style of construction. The resource is a rare example of French eclectic in Oceanside, representative of an American revivalist movement that romanticized the traditional French farmhouse in the 1920s and 1930s. As described in the cultural resources report, the project maintains integrity based upon location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. The property owner has also applied to enter into a Mills Act contract with the city, and the project qualifies for a common sense exemption pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act guidelines, Section 1506-1 subsection B subsection 3. At their special meeting on July 31, 2023, the Oceanside Historic Preservation Advisory Commission unanimously voted to recommend city council approval of the proposed project. The commission found that the Willett residence meets the required criteria to be designated as a locally significant historic resource, consistent with the city's historic preservation code, the State of California Register of Historical Resources, and SEQA. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H23-00001 to designate the property and single-family residents located at 431 South Nevada Street as a locally significant historical resource. Thank you for your time. This concludes the presentation on 431 South Nevada Street. Both I and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. You do not have to have signed up to speak. You have up to three minutes to speak on this item, addressing this issue. Do, do we have anyone actually indicate that they wanted to speak on this?
We have no advanced written request to speak on this item.
Thank you. So if you wish to address this item, please rise, get to the podium, state your name, and then you have up to three minutes to speak. I see nobody rising. I'm going to go ahead and, excuse me, we do have, the, the applicant does get some time on this? Okay, so seeing that there are no public comments on this, Representative for Larry Gerling, would you like to speak at this time? Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close this part of the public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the resolution. Councilmember Weiss?
Move approval.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. It sounds like a wonderful historic site. Thank you so much for that, for doing that. Thank you. Item number 14 is adopting a resolution approving a historic permit to locally designate the property and single-family residents located at 906 West Street as a local historic resource within the city of Oceanside. The proposed project qualifies for a common sense exemption from the, from SEQA pursuant to Section 1506-1 subsection B subsection 3 of the SEQA guidelines. This is the Steele residence, and the applicant is Dominique Babcock. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from council members regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff report only.
Staff report.
No contact?
No contact.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence on our petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin the presentation by Shane Elder again, planner for the city of Oceanside.
Honorable Mayor and council members, once again, I am Shane Elder, Planner One with the Planning Division, now here to discuss Agenda Item Number 14 regarding 906 West Street. Staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H23-00002 to designate the property and single-family residents located at 906 West Street as a locally significant historic resource. The property is located at 906 West Street between South Dittmar Street and South Clementine Street in the townsite neighborhood planning area. The land use designation is single-family detached residential, and the zoning designation is single-family residential. The property is listed in the 1992 Cultural Resources Survey as the OL and Carey Steele residence, and was built in 1929. The architecture is Egyptian revival style, and the property is associated with Orville Steele, who is notable for his connection with the Egyptian revival movement. The subject property features such characteristics as flared bases on both wings of the house that form a recessed porch in the middle, and facade detailing that creates the appearance of large blocks. The temple-like effect is enhanced by pedestals placed at each corner of the flared bases, as well as by the flat roof with wide coping, and depictions of large birds above the garage and picture window. The cultural resources report and historical assessment prepared for the property indicates that it is in good condition. In accordance with Municipal Code, Chapter 14A, a resource must qualify as historically significant, consistent with the criteria established by the California Register of Historical Resources. Historical Resources, to be deemed a local historic resource. As detailed in the cultural resources report, the subject property has been evaluated and found to be culturally significant under the following California Register of Historical Resources criteria. Criterion B, association with a historic person or persons. Builder Orville Steele is noted by the Journal of San Diego History for his association with Egyptian revival architecture in San Diego County, and Criterion C represents a significant design or style of construction. The resource is a rare example of Egyptian revival in San Diego and the only extant example here in Oceanside. It is representative of a subtype of art deco that enjoyed a short-lived resurgence in popularity after the discovery of King Tutankhamun's tomb in 1922, and which is only rarely seen in homes of the period. As described in the cultural resources report, the project maintains integrity based upon location, design, setting, materials, feeling, and association. The property owner has also applied to enter into a Mills Act contract with the city, and the project qualifies for a common sense exemption pursuant to California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, Section 1506-1 subsection B subsection 3. At their special meeting on July 31, 2023, the Oceanside Historic Preservation Advisory Commission unanimously voted to recommend City Council approval of the proposed project. The commission found that the Steele residence meets the required criteria to be designated as a locally significant historic resource, consistent with the city's historic preservation code, the State of California Register of Historical Resources, and SEQA. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a resolution approving historic permit H23-00002 to designate the property and single-family residents located at 906 West Street as a locally significant historic resource. Thank you again for your time. Once again, I and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Elder. This is a public hearing. This is a time for the public to speak on this item, provide their comments regarding the request to designate this as a historic resource within the city of Oceanside. If you would like to speak, please rise, approach the podium, provide your name, and you have up to three minutes to speak. Seeing nobody rising, I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. Ask the applicant if they wish to say anything. Dominique Babcock? Okay, Dominique, thank you.
Move adoption.
So we've got a motion to move adoption of the resolution.
Second.
There's a second, there's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, five zero.
Thank you very much. Congratulations on the Mills Act. Thank you. Thank you very much. It's a lot of work, a lot of investment. Thank you. Okay, back to item number 11. This is introduction of an ordinance and adoption of a resolution approving zone amendment ZA22-00002 and local coastal program amendment, approving amendments to Article 12D Downtown District of the zoning ordinance to establish a maximum density of 100 dwelling units per acre for mixed-use projects in the downtown district, and an enhanced density bonus schedule for very low-income, low-income, and moderate-income dwelling units. The proposed project is exempt from SEQA per Article 5, Section 1506-1 subsection B subsection 3, under the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. The applicant is the city of Oceanside, and this was, this hearing, a public hearing was conducted at the last council meeting, October 4, 2023, and is now closed, so people cannot speak on this item. Is that correct?
The public hearing component is closed. It's an agendaized item, so people can still speak, but it's not part of the public hearing. We didn't have to renotice the hearing, and we would need a disclosure that you've watched, obviously, the recording of the last meeting and considered the evidence since you were absent, so that you can participate today.
The, a motion to approve the density cap at 85 dwelling units per acre with the remaining staff recommendation for density bonus tied two to two at the last hearing pursuant to City Code, Section 2.1.34. The item is automatically continued to this city council meeting, and yes, I did have a chance to look at the tape for this, and we have a report by Manuel Baessa, principal planner.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city. Yes, I am. Manuel Baessa here, principal planner, Planning Division, presenting this item. Honorable Mayor, members of the Planning Commission. At the last meeting on October, I'm sorry, City Council, on October 4, the City Council considered staff's recommendation to approve a zone text amendment and local coastal plan amendment for establishing of 100 dwelling unit per acre density cap with enhanced density bonus schedules for very low-income, low-income, and moderate-income households. The City Council opened and closed the public hearing and voted two to two on an alternative motion to establish the density cap of 85 dwelling units per acre with enhanced schedules. The vote resulted in a tie and no action. Tonight, this item is placed before the City Council for further consideration. Options for the City Council include staff's recommendation of 100 dwelling units per acre with enhanced density bonus schedules, an 85 dwelling per acre density cap with enhanced density bonus schedules that came from the last meeting, or alternative text changes from the City Council. Currently, there is no density cap in the downtown. If the amendment is approved, the ordinance takes effect within 30 days from the date of adoption. In the downtown district areas outside of the coastal zone, downtown areas within the coastal zone boundary will require subsequent approval by the Coastal Commission. There are pending downtown projects that have filed SB 330, applications effectively locking in current applicable development standards. Proposed amendments would apply to yet-to-be-filled downtown projects. But that staff is recommending, the staff and the downtown advisory committee are recommending that the City Council introduce an ordinance and adopt a resolution approving the zone amendment and coastal program amendment, approving a maximum density 100 dwelling units per acre for mixed-use development projects in the downtown and an enhanced density bonus schedule for very low-income, low-income, and moderate-income dwelling units. A memo was provided to the City Council detailing potential densities that could be achieved under various scenarios based on the 15% inclusionary requirement initiated in the August workshop and based on existing density bonus schedules. That concludes staff's presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do we, oh, a public hearing is closed, so no one from the public can speak. Okay, do we have any, anyone who has filed, has submitted a request to speak?
Yes, we've had four speakers.
Okay.
Our first speaker is Hannah Bay. Am I pronouncing that last name correctly? To be followed by Richard Newton, to be followed by Joe Hill, to be followed by Patty.
My name is Hannah Bay. I'm Vice President of Government Affairs at the Building Industry Association of San Diego County. I'm a registered lobbyist in the city of Oceanside, and I represent the residential development industry. I represent the builders, who are the only stakeholder group in our region that are raising our hands frantically, saying we are ready to help solve the housing crisis. We want to build homes for the people in San Diego that every day are making a choice. Can I pay my rent? Can I buy my food? Can I pay for childcare? The entire region of San Diego County, including Oceanside, is in a severe housing crisis. San Diego's own 211 provider states that 14,592 individuals self-identify as homeless. The San Diego Housing Commission states that a minimum of 129,694 San Diego households are on a current waiting list for government assistance housing, a waitlist that is 12 to 15 years long. Our existing housing stock is also overcrowded. We, in the San Diego region, rank fourth worst nationally in overcrowding condition. Our baseline conditions identify that we have hundreds of thousands of people in San Diego that are struggling every day to find a place to live. Our housing crisis is a humanitarian crisis. All our builders want to do is build homes so that we can solve the housing crisis. The housing shortage is a problem of supply and demand. There is not enough housing to meet the demand of those who want to buy. Real estate follows the law of supply and demand. Where there are more buyers than properties for sale, the price rise. Tip the balance the other way, and the prices go down. It's really that simple. We just don't have enough homes for people to live in. We need homes of every type: subsidized housing, market-rate housing, single-family housing, multifamily housing, for rent and for sale. We need it all, and we need it now. The people are desperate, and the government continues to withhold housing construction to the people in our region by passing policies that make building uneconomically viable. Today's density cap proposal is the exact opposite of smart growth. At the same time that the city of Oceanside refuses to allow homes to be built in South Morrow Hills rural areas, you are withholding the ability to build downtown in a redevelopment area that's transit-friendly and VMT-efficient. Every individual that is concerned about climate change should be deeply concerned about the inability to build in environmentally-friendly areas. The BIA asked for 150 units. This is not a concession that we wanted, but the staff recommendation, at least, will be able to provide homes for people in need while meeting the needs of your community that's expressed concerns. No one wants sprawl. We need more homes. Please, just let us build homes.
Next is Richard Newton, followed by Joe Hill, followed by Patty.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. When it comes to building new housing, I'd like to point out that homelessness is something of a red herring. I've mentioned this before in previous meetings, that homelessness is problems of drug addiction and poor personal choices that have made people unemployable and, in some ways, basically unable to secure a job or a residence, and building buildings is not the solution to that. Treating the addictions and the bad personal behaviors is the solution to that. Those in the building industry and a lot of other housing advocates like to say we have a housing crisis. We have not enough houses for too many people, but the flip side of that is that maybe we have too many people in the state of California. We have 38 million people in the state. We have 10% of the, I'm sorry, yeah, about 10% of the entire nation's population, and where does this end? Do we end up with 100 million, 200 million, the entire nation housed here in California? People don't have a right to be here, and there's no, there should be no obligation for housing to be created to give everybody a house who wants to be here. It's a matter of economics, and people can move to other areas in other states that offer viable opportunities and housing at more reasonable prices. What this really comes down to, though, without getting in all the technicalities of state mandates and legalities, is whether or not we wish to retain our identity as a beach town or convert ourselves into a coastal city. And there are two distinctly different types of environments. I think Oceanside is a beach town. It's a great town. It's a great place to be, and I don't want to see it turn into a city with all the problems that come with urban sprawl. And whatever it takes to implement that, I would ask that the City Council do what it can to retain our beach town sort of feel, implement the minimal standards required by the state, and then let's keep our community as it is, as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe Hill?
Good evening. Joe Hill, 23-year resident. Let me give you a quick density recap. August 2, 2019, a day of infamy in Oceanside's downtown development. The council passed a resolution to remove the 43 units per acre density cap with specific support by the BIA, the Chamber, and the Downtown Advisory Committee. The plan was a good one, to control density with a general planned zoning, traffic, parking, and setback regulations. It was a five-zero vote. No worries, right? Wrong. January 2020, SB 330, bonus density, and bills with amendments kept this plan from working. You did not reestablish the downtown cap, and the horrible Peerview Way, Horn Avenue, Breeze, and other projects were in the pipeline. Slow forward to August 10, 2022, three years later, to Agenda Item 27 from Planning with a 75-unit cap to be reestablished. Guess what? Staff pulled the item. On video, even Mr. Mullen publicly criticized that decision, noting it could help correct the root cause of the city's bonus density issues due to the removal of the original cap, and pleaded that the item should be brought back for a vote at the next meeting. Mr. Berger said, "No, not the next meeting, but soon." I guess soon was two weeks ago in 2023, over one year later, with even more projects in the pipeline. Planning, after pushback from the BIA, now wants 100 units. So here we are tonight. We all know that this cap is just an arbitrary number on your part. There's no state pressure, just pressure from the BIA. And Governor Newsom just signed AB 1287. You haven't heard about that. It adds a new bonus density class for middle-income housing, adding even more units to the final total calculation of the projects. Because of AB 1287, even 75 units is now too high. You should be looking somewhere around 50 to prevent a potential catastrophe downtown. Maybe you'll all do the right thing tonight. I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you, and it was actually a four-to-one vote to remove the cap. It wasn't unanimous. To remove the cap, it was four to one.
The votes I have still last one.
Nope, I did not vote for that. Next is Patty.
Yes, thank you. I didn't expect to speak tonight, but since it's on the agenda, thank you very much. With all due respect to the staff, the planning department, the city manager, and who I hope we, you hired the best and the brightest, you do not, they do not have to be Oceanside residents, but the council and the, and the residents who vote for the council do have to be Oceanside residents, so we do enjoy or suffer the consequences of your decision. And I hope, you know, the lobbyists didn't really expect us to be housing the homeless three blocks from the beach in the high tourist area, because that argument didn't make sense to me. But in reviewing the video from last meeting on this topic, which is restricted, I believe, to the downtown area, correct? Even the city manager agreed and said would be acceptable to do the 70, I believe it was, the 75 cap and the, no enhanced density. He felt that that would be acceptable. So that's what we're voting on, or you are voting on tonight, and this is, this is, I walked downtown to the businesses the other day, and even at the businesses, the small businesses, they were not, no one that I spoke with was in favor of a high-density wall-to-wall high-rises downtown, okay? So this is what everyone that I spoke to wants. Yes, we need a density cap. No, we do not want any enhanced bonus density to the developers who have already had an open door from Sacramento to eliminate our local controls. So please keep this in mind for our downtown area. And another question I had, which you probably can't answer right now, but with these historic designations tonight, can we look into a historic designation downtown and have a historic downtown area? And that would help preserve some of our, our area downtown from being high-rise. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes the speakers on this item.
That concludes the speakers, okay. Back to the council, Councilmember Robinson. And I do want to apologize to everyone. I was not able to make the meeting last time. I think that was the first time that I've not been to a council meeting in years. I actually ended up getting COVID, and I didn't even know it. I was just sicker than a dog and decided to take a test, and when I realized it was COVID, I decided I did not want to share my misery with everybody, so I should stay home. Thank you. Councilmember Robinson?
Thank you. Maybe Mr. Mullen has to clarify this. So there's a motion that we left on the table that we have to deal with, or can I make an alternate motion?
Well, you made a, there was a motion, I think it was 85 dwelling units, two-two, so it didn't pass. The issue comes back to you at your next meeting under our city code, so you're free to take up the old motion. You're free to make a new motion.
Well, I'd like to make a new motion then. My motion is, is... My motion is, is because staff and the downtown advisory committee, that we adopt the 100-density unit without the enhancements.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Joyce?
I'll just speak to the motion. So I think it's really important because we're talking about the density and we have the state law that's in place. That is, that's what we're dealing with now. So if we set the downtown density at 100, the actual maximum density we could see is 150 units. Is that correct?
200. 150, 200.
No, that, under the motion, with the motion, because there's no enhanced density, which I do appreciate the simplification of removing that. Is that correct, sir?
Councilmember Joyce, under the proposed motion, that would be the maximum potential density at a per acre count, so 150 units per acre.
Okay. And that's if there are, is an inclusion of 15 very low units, very low-income units, right? 15% of that first amount.
That's correct.
And then you add on the extra 50% units. If it's 100 units, you add the extra 50 units. And the actual, the actual rate of affordability goes down to 10%. So one out of every, one out of the 10 units is an affordable unit set aside for affordability.
Under the base density scenario, not including the density bonus.
Okay. No, that does include.
No, no, you, the public, public comment period is over, ma'am. We can't hear you anymore. This is a public hearing. We, we. You are out of order, ma'am. I'm sorry, you have to, you can't speak.
It's too late.
It's too late.
So is that correct? You said not including density bonus. What were you saying?
Councilmember Joyce, to clarify, your statement of one out of every 10 units would be affordable, that would be without including the density bonus units. So if you have a one-acre site and you do a 15% affordability.
15 of the 150. So it would be one out of every, one out of 10.
Of the total units.
Correct.
Yes.
So the actual rate is 10%. I just want to be really clear about what is being proposed here. And that's, 150 is what we could see on the end of this, because we are under the state density bonus law. In my opinion, that is still too high, considering everything that has been built up until now, with the exception of just a few places like the Pier Side South, came under a 43-units-per-acre. I would much rather see, I'd much rather see us just double the historical density to 86. And then if we find that we do not have enough incentive for people to come build downtown, which I highly doubt, because it's the most sought-after space in our entire city, then we can raise it up to 100. Then we can make that decision in a year from now. But why go all the way, all the way up in this very first chance we got?
Mayor Sanchez. I just, so, excuse me. Are you finished with your comments? Okay, Councilmember Weiss.
Actually, Pier Side South is not 43 units per acre. It's almost at, almost at 96, almost at 100, which is why, so if someone came in at 100 and chose not to do any affordable units, what would the density be at 100 units on one-acre project?
100 units per acre.
If they did 15% moderate, they'd be at 110.
That's correct.
Not even for rentals.
To clarify, moderate-income density bonus is only allowed for for-sale products.
But for, for, if they choose to not participate and just pay the in-lit fee, they'd be at 100. So it would look, be like Pier Side South.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Joyce?
Again, I just bring it up because the scenario that we are facing is we're going to see the worst, I mean, we assume that we could see the worst possible scenario. And if 150 units per acre is not what we're targeting, then we should target 100 at the maximum, which would be 75. Anyway, okay. Is there any other thoughts?
No lights. I will say this. 375 square feet for a one-bedroom is really, 375 square feet is really a studio. I can't even begin to imagine at no density, no cap, which I did vote against. I had heard that this, certain legislators were moving towards requiring us to build at higher densities. I did not think that it would be this high, right? But to imagine this kind of product being built, who would, who would rent that? One bedroom, that small? I mean, I think that at some level, we are building for units that will be either not rented or hope that we can get, they can get the council to lift the requirement that they're not, that they not be short-term rentals. That's my big concern here. Councilmember Joyce?
I think I pulled my, I pulled my light.
Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
Question for staff. Before the last meeting, you gave us this work, this sheet that had all of the pending and projects on file. So that includes, well, I think Sunsets is now approved, includes the Regal Cinema, the Belvedere, Block, 5 Block 20, 212 Seagate, you've got Pier Side, five, oh, the north and south they're built, Neptune, Moderna Neptune. So they're all on file. They're, regardless of what we do today, they're locked in.
That's correct. The projects that are in process now would be locked into the current no-density scenario. The projects have submitted SB 330 applications, which some of those have, but not, have not yet submitted a formal development application, would still be locked in at the unlimited density. And the projects that are located within the coastal zone would have until the Coastal Commission certified this local coastal plan amendment to file an application at the unlimited-density scenario.
Would coastal take as long as they are with the ends of Buena Creek?
I can't answer on behalf of Coastal Commission.
Councilmember Weiss, just to add in, those projects that did avail themselves of the SB 330 have to file a final application within 180 days. So they're not locked in necessarily forever. They're locked in until that time period. Now, they could turn around and file another SB 330, but I didn't want you to think that they could just hold it forever.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Joyce?
I'd like to offer to amend the motion to 86 units per acre.
What happened to 75? I actually support the 75. I agree that it is, I actually wanted to go back to the 43, believe it or not. But, you know, I think 75 is a consensus, a, to me, it's going in the middle. We can always raise it if it does not meet our needs. But the thing is that unless, unless we finally get serious about doing a initiative against what is happening in Sacramento, I know that there's a ton of money, and that's the reason why we're stuck in this Sacramento decides everything for our city. I was hoping to actually come up with a formula that, you know, keeping the 43 dwelling units an acre and trying to figure out what that would, how we would make that possible by using a formula that says, okay, we know that the state laws apply and therefore if we really want to control, if we really want to control, you know, our own zoning, then we factor that in. I'm hearing seven, I'm hearing 86, 75. I think 100 is too many. So Councilmember Joyce?
I'd just say one more thing. I haven't spoken to a single person that lives in our city that wants us to drastically increase from the previous building that we've had before. I know that we need housing, and so let's do it incrementally. The problem with, with being very drastic in this is that once the tower is built, you can't, you're not taking it down. We can always go a little bit more dense if we need to. We cannot undo once that development is already in place. So again, I, I really wish that we could have, we had it at a number that we could support. That's reasonable, that's incremental. Unfortunately, the 100 is too high.
Okay, Councilmember Weiss?
Just one final question for staff. If we were to eliminate the city's mandatory inclusionary requirements, I presume that the density bonus issue goes away. There's no waivers for height, setback, and open space, because they wouldn't have to provide the affordable unit. Would that be accurate?
Councilmember Weiss, that's tough to speculate on what the development community might do. It all depends on what individual developers, a development program is and what their financials look like. If, previously, prior to lifting the density cap in downtown, inclusionary housing wasn't applicable in the downtown district. As part of that motion, we required inclusionary housing to be included within the downtown district. So it's hard to speculate what a particular developer might do. They still may seek a density bonus with 100 units per acre to achieve a greater number of unit yield for the finances, for financial purposes of the project.
That would be their choice. They wouldn't have to, they would have to pay the fee or set aside the units, would may make it easier, because then we have standards, then you have the development standards that they have to adhere to.
That's correct. It would be a choice.
Thank you.
Councilmember Joyce?
I just wanted to speak to that as well. If we eliminated that, they could still seek the state density bonus. So we don't have any, we don't have any control over that. And what they're really seeking the state density bonus for, which we appreciate about that they're including units, but they're seeking it because it reduces our ability to say no. And so I don't see that going anywhere, no matter what they're building. We're seeing density bonus on small, small projects all across the city.
Including residential. Councilmember Robinson?
I just, you know, there's been comments made about, oh, if we go to this and if it doesn't work, we can do it later. I think staff explained their rationale for how they got to this number, looking at projects and what was needed for people to come in and build the projects. Remind us all, we're not building projects. The city's not doing it. The developers are coming in and doing it. And that's what they've, they've needed, that kind of density. That's what, if I understand what staff was saying, that's where they modeled it to be. Am I correct, kind of?
Councilmember Robinson, that is accurate statement. Our recommendations, staff's recommendation is based on analysis of projects that we have on file and projects that have recently been built. And we found that the target density was about 175 units an acre. That's what we've seen on file come in. And that's been explained to us by the builders, that that's the density range that they need to make finance, projects financially feasible.
So the only, the only thing about that is there are assumptions involved with that. And the assumptions are that we, that we want to continue to develop everything and we want the development to be a constant stream. I think this, this is our opportunity to say what is a reasonable development. What is a development that we are actually seeking out to continue the development in our city? So this is where we do get to, to make those reasonable limits.
And in terms of arena numbers, we need low and very low. We don't need other units, that this is not really meeting our needs, which is why we need to build affordable, affordable housing projects. Deputy Mayor Keim?
A quick question for staff. Say we set a cap of 86 today and there was a project that came in that was higher, but it fit well, and they adhered to all our development standards, and it was a good project that wasn't like some of the past ones where, you know, they, there's no setbacks, no parking. Could we do a general plan amendment and permit a certain project if we thought it was appropriate?
Deputy Mayor Keim, that type of action would require, off the top of my head, at least a specific plan, which is specific to that individual site, which is a longer, drawn-out process, because it's legislative in nature and has, there's significant analysis needs to go into those types of projects.
That would also require a local coastal plan amendment and go through the Coastal Commission.
All right, well, there is a motion by Councilmember Robinson, and that's sitting at 100, correct? Without the city's density. The enhanced density. But the state density would still apply. So there's a motion and there was a second. So let's go ahead and vote.
May I tie home here?
Sorry?
Sorry. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 12 of the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance to establish a maximum density of 100 dwelling units per acre and an enhanced, will leave out the enhanced density bonus schedule. That is now stricken from the caption of the draft ordinance for ZA 220002. And Section 12.32 of the exhibit will remain as is. Section 12.34 downtown density bonus matrices will be deleted in its entirety.
Okay, let's vote.
And then there's a resolution.
Motion fails. Two, three. Sanchez, Weiss, no.
Did you want to make the alternative motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me. Hold on. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt an 86 cap.
There's a motion and a second with respect to adopting the cap at 86, and that is with the same.
With no, with no enhancement.
With no enhancements. So basically the same conditions as before. Councilmember Robinson?
I'm sorry, can you explain 86 versus 90, or is that just something you pulled out of your hat?
He doesn't usually wear a hat.
86 is double the previous. So 43 was our previous, 86 is double.
Okay, no other, no further discussion? I see no more lights? Okay, there is a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved. Three, two. Sanchez, Weiss, no.
I did want to lower. However, if that lost, we would not have any caps, so, which is not what I wanted. Okay, now we're to, let's do the mayor and her council items. Some people are waiting for that. That is item number 17. This is a request by Councilmember Joyce and Councilmember Robinson to direct, to direct staff to develop a plan to open a safe parking lot to support unhoused community members with a car, with a car in getting back into stable housing. And I assumed, well, staff will need to identify possible sites for the lot and seek interested services providers, interested service providers for the operation of said lot. And I, and I guess that is without, at no cost to the city. So Councilmember Joyce or Councilmember Robinson?
Well, I want to thank, first of all, Councilmember Robinson for joining me to bring this forward. It's a really important program that has been successful in other cities. There are many, many benefits to doing this type of program, which is really about safety and security for folks who are vulnerable to be comm-living on the street when they, in fact, currently have a car to sleep in. It It provides dignity and privacy, access to basic amenities, which can be helpful if folks are trying to move up in the job market or apply for a more, more permanent home. It provides really the stability and routine that folks need to, to have to come out of their situation. And with service providers who are well trained in the industry, they have a really strong track record with programs like this of getting folks into more permanent housing and really preventing a spiral, which is detrimental to, to all. And so with that, I hope to have the support of the council.
Councilmember Robinson, did you want to speak before hearing from the public?
We can hear.
Okay, how many requests to speak?
We have 16 speakers on this item.
Not yet. Is it, is it, is it 30, is it 30 days from adoption for the, for that or is it in the next council meeting that we can do organized presentations?
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
It has to come back. Okay, right. All right. Well, I guess, I guess, yeah, I was going to say, all right, so 16, so two minutes each. That'll be 32 minutes. Steve Burrell, followed by William Seymour, followed by Daniel Dominguez, followed by Mary Thompson.
And as you see your name up on the screen, we have two available podiums, so feel free to move to the next available podium.
My name is Steve Burrell, resident of Oceanside. I'm here tonight to share a little, I hope, information you will find valuable relating to this subject. I recently attended a presentation on a study that was done by the University of San Francisco that was commissioned by the state of California. It's the most comprehensive study of homeless since the 90s. And I wanted to share with you some key takeaways. First of all, 20% of the homeless are in a vehicle. Of those vehicles, 51% are cars, trucks or vans. 49% are, lost my place. Anyway, RVs, I'm sorry. So nine out of 10 people have lost their housing at some point or another where you're in a, a vehicle, staying in a vehicle. And real quick, people feel safe. They, you know, given the choice of being out on the streets to stabilize them, this is the right thing to do to consider it. One other point I wanted to make is homeless adults, more, majority of them are from California and they're from the county that they lived in and became homeless in. The other thing is the single adults are aging. Nearly half of them are 50 and older. And homeless adults stay for extended times. The median length is two years. The one third of the adults who are homeless are, become part of the chronic, chronic homeless. The last thing I want to do is share with you the means to have this study available for you. Somebody could help me pass it around. So that you have it, I strongly urge you to look at it. The whole purpose of it is for policymakers like you to have more information, to be better informed, to make the decisions that are so critical.
Thank you very much.
One last thing I would say too.
No, thank you very much.
I've had two people invade my house, one just recently who were homeless. So, you know, coming from a personal point of view, we got to do better than what we've done. Thank you.
William Seymour, followed by Daniel Dominguez, followed by Mary Thompson.
Hello, my name is William Seymour. I was born in Oceanside. I've been homeless off and on for five years. I would support this if it wasn't used as justification for a criminalization of homelessness. Recently in downtown San Diego, the requirements for making a law that made it to where you could be incarcerated for being poor, or having a safe parking area, and I forget the second part, but that was the first step before they started arresting homeless people. But I don't, I don't support that. There's no, I don't see a benefit in having a place that people could go that's going to make them any safer. It's going to just corral them. The safest thing they can do is have the ability to move or to go to a safe area.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez?
I'm Daniel Dominguez, longtime Oceanside resident. I'm here to speak in favor of this motion and frankly, my opinion is it's about time. So let me talk about some personal experience is I found myself in one of these situations when I was young, moved to California, lost a place I live, was living in my vehicle and couch surf, and couch surfing when I could. Recently, I live in the Morrel Hills area and before all the North River Farms construction, in the mornings when I would go to work, I would see a line of cars coming out from, from around the riverbed, heading out probably to work. So people that live in their cars are usually, or contingent of them are the working poor. There are people that have one foot in the abyss of homelessness and this proposal would keep them from falling into that abyss, which then becomes extremely expensive and hard to get them off, out of that abyss. I've said that before, I've advocated before that the only way that we're going to reduce homelessness is if we cut off the supply. And this idea is, I think is a very good idea and I support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joe Hill. Oh, excuse me, Mary Thompson, followed by Joe Hill.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and councilmembers. My name is Mary Thompson. I'm the co-chair of the League of Women Voters Housing and Homelessness Committee. On behalf of the league, I'm here to express our support for Councilmembers Joyce and Robinson's proposal to direct staff to develop a plan to open a safe parking lot for unhoused community members with a car. We believe this is a positive step for the city and we urge your approval of this proposal. It's crucial that we offer compassionate solutions like this to support our most vulnerable residents. We look forward to seeing the constructive impact this safe parking space would have on the community. Thank you for your service and your attention.
Thank you. Joe Hill, followed by Sunny Soto.
I have a 30 second comment. A year or so ago, Councilmember Weiss brought up a similar plan for a permanent solution before we had the permanent structure that we put on Oceanside Boulevard. There was no action on that, so I would suggest as part of the consideration for this plan that you arrange to have temporary facilities, restrooms, showers, all of that set up professionally to make this happen and, and it's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny Soto, followed by Eileen Costa, followed by Jimmy Knott.
All right. Thank you for your time, councilmembers and Mayor Sanchez. My name is Sunny Soto Briscoe. I'm the founder of a local nonprofit, Sunny Street Outreach, where we provide aid and services to our houseless and underserved communities here in Oceanside. I'd say about 50% of our guests we serve weekly live in their vehicles and I've been a firsthand witness to their struggles. They actually consider themselves privileged compared to their peers because at least they have shelter from weather, a place to store their belongings and a potential way to get from place to place. They still face so many obstacles like having to continuously move their vehicle because of the parking laws in the city or be faced with no limit of parking tickets given to them, which ultimately leads to risk of losing their vehicle and license. Battling gas prices because you have to move so much and overnight parking is the hardest to find, which pushes these obstacles to be fought during the hours of 2:00 AM and 6:00 AM. What's the result of this? Neighbors who are already in survival mode, being pushed to lack of sleep and in constant paranoia of harassment or parking citation for just trying to get some rest. This is a traumatizing way to live. Without a safe lot, these people will eventually be sleeping on our sidewalks. Safe lots save lives by giving neighbors a secured place to sleep without worry of robbery or crime and with connection to resources they need along with basic human rights like showers, bathrooms, food provided to them. Safe lots save lives by helping people who are closer to breaking the cycle of homelessness. Oceanside is the biggest city in San Diego County with square footage and the similar cities like Encinitas and Vista can make space for this resource, we definitely can as well. If we can allocate 1.3 million to, from our Measure X fund for 24-hour patrol of downtown area, we can find the funds to allocate for this life-saving resource to our residents. A safe lot is an affordable resolution to a great tool to add to our resources we have to aid our unhoused neighbors. I emailed you all the link to a petition that we have signed, almost 400 signatures here so far and still more as we speak. I hope this helps you to vote pushing this forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
G T Wharton.
Good evening, honorable councilmembers and honorable Mayor Sanchez. My name is G T Wharton. I want to thank Councilmember Joyce and Robinson for adding this important item to the agenda today, which helps solve the intricate problem of homelessness in our city. At present, unhoused individuals that live out of their vehicles do not have a safe designated place to park overnight. Many choose to use, for example, Walmart or Target parking lots because there's very little enforcement or restriction on the overnight parking there. Problem with this is that these parking lots do not provide proper amenities. They do not have, for example, a place to dispose of waste or a place to use the restroom. I do cleaning up of litter on, in my free time under the Instagram handle Cleaning Up Oceanside. And the Walmart parking lot in, off of Maron Road, I see the storm gutters fill up with trash week after week because the property manager does not have the resources to maintain it. And right now, the city of Oceanside is having to hire contractors to clean up that accumulation of trash. I'm in support of this measure, not only because it will create an official safe place for unhoused individuals to park overnight, but it will also provide basic amenities that are not provided at these de facto parking sites. Such a measure would be most effective if the safe parking site included not just trashcans, but also bathrooms and showers. Examples in San Diego also provide housing navigation, job training, mental health treatment, substance abuse treatment, and even in Los Angeles, some even provide laundry. I think this is a great opportunity for Oceanside to continue battling the issue of homelessness, not by criminalizing or demonizing those that are less fortunate, but by instituting proven solutions as the one that is brought before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Costa, followed by Jimmy Knott, followed by David O.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and councilmembers. I am in favor, my name is Eileen Costa and I'm an Oceanside resident. I'm in favor of a place for safe parking. Many who seek this protection are homeless for the first time. In today's economy, there are many reasons a person will become homeless. Why? It's not always a bad choice. It could be a job loss, a divorce, medical bills, sudden disability, medical problems or a crisis in their life. And I worked at Brother Benno's for four years and I talked to the homeless and I've met people like this. They did not choose homelessness and they're frightened and they don't know what to do. These people are displaced and need a safe place to sleep. They need the wraparound services that it could provide to repair their lives. In addition, I have seen homeless people help and share needed information with each other and this parking situation would help in that. In safe parking lots, people are screened and drugs and alcohol are not permitted. Case managers are available for help in housing, career coaching, budgeting and parent classes and child services. This is an immediate need that's important for our people, our Oceanside residents. Each of us could fall into any of these problems at a moment's notice. How is that said? We're one slip away from, on a banana peel? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knott?
Mayor, councilmembers, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. I don't know how often you speak with your staff, but I have in the past, still do. And I've heard many have broken heart when they have a person come in off the street, like over our senior centers, and saying, you know, I need some help. My rent has gone high, sky high. Or something tragedy has occurred in my family and I have nowhere to live. That has hit numerous times and other things to our staff. They need some support. You can help provide that support by giving at least a small measure of providing a perfect place for a safe place for these people. The measure of the greatness of a city is how you treat the poorest among you. I hope Oceanside shows how great we are and that you set up at this with community assistance, referrals, provide services and amenities and give the staff here in the city contact saying, here is where you can go. This is what you can have for an answer. This is where you can get some support. I think your staff would greatly appreciate your aid and assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Max? Oh, excuse me, David.
Yes, my name is David Ontiveros. I'm a homegrown Oceansider, born and bred. I'm here to support and express my support for this item. The item presented by Councilmember Joyce and Councilmember Robinson is a huge step in the right direction when addressing homelessness in Oceanside. With Measure X being on the ballot in 2024, there's a potential to allocate some funding for this program to support the organization that would ultimately be operating this, this safe site and parking. If the city council chooses to move forward, to its implementation, of course. Organizations like Jewish Family Services and Dreams for Change could serve as great partners in helping staff, or in helping staff navigate the logistics and nuances when beginning to write out the plan or bring a plan to you guys. Their current safe parking programs in San Diego County provide a sense of safety and stability to individuals and families facing hardships due to various social and economic policies at the county, state and federal level, or due to those specific things. One quick thing that I do also want to note is that the city of Oceanside also does have a comprehensive homeless strategy that is in place. That one, I will like to say that it is outdated. It is, it was conducted in 2019 or at least published in 2019. So if we could bring some, some sort of effort, bringing back as COVID kind of took over and kind of implemented a whole new realm of strategies to potentially address this, this crisis that we're in. But I support the, the motion. Thank you, Councilmember Joyce and Councilmember Robinson for bringing this forward and I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Isprosti, followed by Wendy Bravo-Dolan, followed by Amber Kay Niuatoa.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. Councilmember Max Isprosti, Oceanside resident. Everything has been set so far. I think that as a, I speak also as a service provider that provides services to homeless youth in particular. I just want to give you an idea because sometimes there has been false rhetorics about what these parking lots are and what they are not. They are not a place where people just congregate. There are solutions that have been put to place with outcomes that have been measured for the past few years that have been very successful where social worker, caseworkers participate and it's a short-term solution. It's not a parking where people stay for years and years to go. What we have noticed in the past few, excuse me, four years is that our youth that goes to college at Miracosta or community colleges or Palomar or Cal State are not able to afford an apartment anymore, even though they have full-time jobs and go to school. So what they do, they buy a car. They pay $600 for their monthly payments and they sleep in the car. And they come to us to ask us, where is a safe place to sleep? And they move constantly and they, they get tickets and they are pushed away from their neighbors. These are working class people, the future of the working class people that are not able to afford a housing, a permanent space. So I'm happy to see this happening. I know the logistics are going to address later when stock comes back with some of the research, so I'm really looking forward to see this pass forward and we'll discuss more later. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Bravo-Dolan?
Good evening, esteemed members of the council. I'm a little hoarse. My name's Wendy Bravo-Dolan. I'm an all- blade at Prince of Peace Abbey. This means that we take a promise to be an extension of the monastery insofar as our station in life will allow. And so I look at this project with a great deal of joy because it is charity, is love in action. And it's really the hallmark of a compassionate municipality. We know that women in particular are prey to rape. We're talking about a car that is a house. It's a very fragile thing, may already have windows broken, certainly children inside. This is a way of keeping the family as a unit. This is a way of keeping the family as a unit and offering what Brother Benno's calls soap and hope and something of the human dignity of affording them the simple things in life that will give them the courage of heart to come out and move ahead through the services that you offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard. Excuse me, Amber. Amber Niuatoa. Followed by Diane Nygaard, followed by Jimmy Figueroa.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you so much, Councilmember Joyce and Robinson, for bringing this to the forefront. As a professor at Maricopa College, I've had three students already this semester reach out to me about housing crisis and losing their homes, and one popular student who is living in their car is someone who, through my college years, volunteered for seven years at Brother Benno's, serving breakfast. And at the warehouse drop-offs, I have been connected to Oceanside's unhoused community for most of my life. I've lived here since 1989, and I've watched the problem grow throughout the years. So I commend the council in taking this initiative and being proactive in setting up a safe space for our community members who are struggling at this time. I implore us to also make sure that we do take in consideration the other things that are necessary in running a space like this, such as having sanitation and showers, laundry services, and things like that that make it easier for people to go out and apply for jobs, show up for interviews, show up with dignity in public spaces, and present themselves so that they can become active members in community and find housing once again. So I am in full support. I won't take the whole time. I just want to say thank you for this measure, and I look forward to our community taking a proactive approach.
Thank you. Diane Nygaard, followed by Jimmy Figueroa, followed by Michelle Seer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Diane Nygaard, representing Preserve Talavera. Thank all of you for your persistence and commitment of money that resulted in the opening of our recent 50-bed new shelters. That was a big step in the right direction. But we know this is a complex issue. It's not a one-size-fits-all that works. Last month, we joined the City of Oceanside and San Diego Habitat Conservancy and 91 Intrepid Volunteers and picked up 4,000 pounds of trash and 500 pounds of recyclables around the assault of waterfall in what had formerly been homeless encampments. Those kinds of things in those locations cause untold damage to our natural areas. Clearly, we need safe parking lots to help address homelessness. We need safe campgrounds. We need safe shelters. And of course, we need more affordable housing. Please vote yes tonight and take this next step forward. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you, Councilmember Joyce and Robinson, for bringing this forward. My name is Jimmy Figueroa. I'm a lifelong Oceanside resident. I'm also an executive director of one of our few homeless shelters here in North County. My homeless shelter specifically serves families with children, and the majority of our families at our shelter are not families struggling with substance abuse. These are families that have experienced economic instability due to not having a livable wage. One of the things that we hear from many of our parents is that the fear that they were living, the fear of not being safe at night, living in their cars with their kids, and what happens when one of their kids has to use the restroom, and then trying to find a bathroom that they can go into and then having to relocate parking lots, hoping that no one sees them. This is a critical need in our community. You know, the families that we service at our shelter, the majority of them are from Oceanside. And last year, we serviced over 60% of our population were children, and these were children from our community that were living in their cars. So providing a safe place for them to be is definitely a critical need. So I definitely support the development of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Michelle Seer, Oceanside resident and social worker. As a social worker, I've been really concerned about the homeless. My heart just goes out to them, and I agree with all of the things that are said by everyone who supports this motion. I'm so glad that you're doing it, and thank you, Councilmembers Joyce and Robinson, for bringing it forward. I feel like our community has needed it for so long. It's so basic, it's so essential for just humanity. It's to hear Jimmy speak about just the shame involved and people just not having basic resources like hygiene, bathrooms. Hopefully, there will be showers at this, if we get this parking lot instated, which hopefully we will. It's also so essential for safety, especially for women, as was already mentioned. We are so much more prone to and at risk of being raped and murdered. And of course, all genders are at risk of that and of murders and violent assaults. And so I just think that it'll be so much safer for the homeless to be in one place. It also will give us a place to take resources. There's been many times where, at the end of parties or gatherings, we have so much food left over, and I'm thinking, I could take it to this street corner or that street corner. But now we'll have a place to take it to a lot of homeless people that are in need. And I just thank you for considering this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that's it for speakers, and I believe Councilmember Robinson was going to speak.
Well, thank you. Just real quick, I just want to say that when Councilmember Joyce brought this to me, I had to think about it a little bit, just as how it would work. But I had a chance to talk to the Vista Mayor, and he had kind of a similar experience. He thought that he wasn't sure about it, is in his words. And then now that they have it, he says it has worked very well in their city. And another thing that reminded me of the need for it, and several of our speakers spoke about it, was, and Mayor, I think you might remember this, at the Rising Star Breakfast the other day, I think one of the Rising Stars that were on her talked about her family had been homeless and had lived in a car. So a lot of times, we see these families with very, with children, and, as Jimmy Figueroa said, you know, they just need that safe place. So, but I think it's important, and Councilmember Joyce, if I say anything wrong here, please stop me. Some things that we did talk about, and maybe it would help staff, is that we're looking not for a campsite per se, but a evening to morning timeframe. We talked about, not for large vehicles per se, but cars or, you know, vans, smaller vehicles, and preferably somewhere where we could have hygiene services and those kind of things. Is that representative?
Absolutely, yes.
And then I don't think, unless you did, I don't think we talked to, we mentioned to staff about timing, and we realize that it may take till our January meeting for this to come back to us. Is that correct?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmember, yes, that is correct, given the nature of the request in terms of actually soliciting potential partners and, of course, identifying sites that will take a bit of time, but I think we can probably come back in January.
Thank you.
No other lights? Councilmember Joyce.
I just, again, thanks, everyone, for coming out, like, the prevention of this and really preventing the deep trauma that goes along with, like, losing the car and being on the streets. Just, this is definitely a common sense step, one that's humane. So I'll make a motion to adopt the recommendation, or what would be the correct motion?
Was that the second?
I'll second it.
Okay. I did speak to Mayor Tony Krantz of Encinitas, and their program was, did not cost the city a dime. So they basically were able to partner with a social service organizations, social service organization, and, you know, that seemed to work, especially since it was not next to a residential. So I know that's going to be the challenge, but hopefully, if it's not in a residential place, it might work out better. So, all right, there's a motion in a second, and hopefully it'll be free. Let's vote. Oh, by the way, this is not going to impact our in-lug fees. Is that correct? This is not going to, this is not going to be about using our in-lug fees that we are trying to build permanent supportive housing.
I think that's up for staff to bring back, but I think our desire is that it's a no-cost item to the city.
Okay, no cost to the city.
No, or as little as we can cost to the city.
I trust the staff to bring back recommendations, and those could include no cost or limited cost or whatever needs to be necessarily done. And I'm happy to have that conversation on technicalities next time.
Right, because we are short on units, and I know we, the staff's priority is building units for our in-lug fees. It's not much, $10 million, and it's low and very low. So that is my priority, to build permanent housing. There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay. Next, our communications to the public regarding items not on the agenda, item number 16.
Madam Mayor, have we, I think we skipped over item 12.
Oh, did we? I'm sorry. That's because I had written all over. Okay, item 12, my apologies. Approval of amendment to the professional services agreement with Johnson Favaro in the amount of $2.7 million for a revised contract amount of $3 million for preliminary design and environmental support services for beachfront improvement feasibility study. This is Phase 2, and also authorization for the city manager to execute the amendment. Ms. Darra Woods, Senior Civil Engineer, will be doing the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Darra Woods, Senior Civil Engineer in the Development Services Department. The item before you tonight is the Beachfront Improvement Feasibility Study, Phase 2. Tonight, staff is recommending that City Council approve Amendment 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with Johnson Favaro in an amount of approximately $2.7 million for a revised contract amount of approximately $3 million for preliminary design and environmental support services for the Beachfront Improvement Feasibility Study, Phase 2, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment. A brief project review of this item is in May of 2020. City staff was authorized to proceed with the feasibility study, and in January of 2021, a PSA with Johnson Favaro was approved to complete a feasibility study to look at potential improvements for the Junior Sayal Beach Community Center, Junior Sayal Pier Amphitheater, Bandshell, and the interior plaza and public spaces. An item to note is that work commenced concurrently on the Pierview Way Bridge and Lifeguard Headquarters Project. And ultimately, in October of 2022, at a City Council workshop, the City Council received the Beachfront Improvement Feasibility Conceptual Alternatives and concurred with the staff recommendations for the study sites. And at this workshop, council's action also included a request to include the initial concept developed for Betty's Lot in the environmental review, and City Council authorized staff to evaluate the area as a whole and coordinate future efforts with the Pierview Bridge Project. Which brings us to tonight. Although the beachfront feasibility study and pier bridge are two project, two separate project and study sites, one consolidated project program, I apologize, program environmental impact report covering both areas is planned due to their proximity and overlapping areas, as you can see in the slide in front of you, the recent completion of the respective feasibility studies and conceptual designs, and City Council's prior authorization to coordinate future efforts. The scope of work for the PSA amendment includes advancing the design from conceptual drawings to more detailed architectural and engineering plans for the Beachfront Community Center, sorry, I apologize again, Junior Sayal Beach Community Center, Pier Amphitheater and Bandshell, including review of the site program in use, preliminary investigations for survey, geotechnical, and utilities, extensive public outreach, mechanical structural plumbing, landscape plans, and specialty consultant services such as acoustics, lighting, and security, and detailed cost estimating, as well as providing SEQA support services for the program PIR. Additionally, a high-level review of Betty's Lot will be evaluated as a PIR alternative. And just to note that any potential reuse of Betty's Lot would require future additional public engagement, design, and environmental review, so a high-level review is being included in this. Ultimately, this phase of the project is to get one step closer to having a shovel-ready project available for potential grant funding. The Amendment 1 for the PSA is in the amount of approximately $2.7 million, and again, includes preliminary design and SEQA support services, and funding sources are the Community Facilities Program and Measure X funding. In conclusion, staff recommends that City Council approve Amendment 1 to the Professional Services Agreement with Johnson Favaro in an amount of approximately $2.7 million for a revised contract amount of approximately $3 million for preliminary design and environmental support services for the Beachfront Improvement Feasibility Study, Phase 2, and execute the agreement with the city manager. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Yeah, I do have a question on your scope of work. Slide before this, I think. You indicated that with respect to Betty's Lot, that would be additional to what is being proposed? The additional, any potential reuse of Betty's Lot would require future additional public engagement, design, and environmental review? Or is that included in this?
That, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, that is not included in this.
Okay.
Just a high-level, as a project, alternative for the PIR. Anything else would require additional.
Right, all right, thank you. And this is...
General, I apologize.
Do we have any requests to speak from the public?
We have no requests to speak from the public on this item.
Okay. Then to the council, there's a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you.
Item number 16, communications with the public on off-agenda items. How many do we have?
We have 19 speakers.
19. So let's do two minutes, then. That's 40 minutes.
All right. Our first speaker is Michael Tenhofer, to be followed by Stephanie Dimakidis, to be followed by Carol Broland.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Tenhofer. I live at 873 Waller Drive. This area would be affected by the Eddie Jones Warehouse. Tonight, I'd like to ask the City Council to find a more suitable use for this light industry site. We love living in Oceanside, and our community has worked hard to make a safe place to enjoy a good quality of life. For example, our community is working directly with the Oceanside Fire Department. It gets certified in the Nationwide Firewise Program. There are 700 firewise sites in California. We would be the first one in Oceanside, and I think the first one in North County. Recently, we also had a crime and prevention safety visit from the Oceanside Police. We had four officers spend two hours going through the whole neighborhood, and we're now working to implement the many useful ideas they provided. So we have worked hard to have a good neighborhood for Oceanside, and we've done it by working with the city. Putting the warehouse at that location is a big step backwards for both us and the city. Honestly, it feels like we're getting punished by the city. As we try, as we will have to suffer with the traffic, the noise, and the bad air, at the same time, we are working in good faith to make the city better. Please reject this warehouse project and do what is best for the thousands of residents that will be affected by it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I didn't notice your shirt was blue. Okay. Stephanie Dimakidis.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Dimakidis. I live on Soyla Drive in the Juana's View community that would be immensely affected by this Eddie Jones project. This is the first time I have ever stood in front of people and talked, so I'm making this very short.
Doing a good job.
I'm also a Realtor for Paul Wilbanker Realty. The prices of our homes are going to be reduced with this Eddie Jones project if it ends up, I mean, in effect because of the traffic, the congestion, and the fact that when you're going to show a person a house and you're in your car and you have to stop at this light on Bennett Road and 76 and have to wait for these tractor trailers to turn in... and 76, and have to wait for these tractor trailers to turn in, it is definitely going to turn off people from wanting to live in our community. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Carol Brolin?
My name's Carol Brolin. I am a resident of Oceanside. I'm a registered voter. I am opposed to the Eddie Jones Warehouse Distribution Center for many reasons, but I just don't feel it's a good fit for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Walker?
Thank you. We're trying to bring this up. Good evening. My name is Bob Walker. Council members, honorable mayor, my name's Bob Walker. I'm Vice President of Save Oceanside Sand. I've got good news. Last Thursday, our SOS Executive Director, Bob Ashton, and another volunteer, Charles Bowen, spoke to the California Coastal Commission. Bob's subject was, "Oceanside needs your help in restoring our beaches." And I'm going to read his closing comments. "The Coastal Commission can help by providing committed, forward-leaning leadership in overcoming a major impediment to the successful restoration of our beaches. The obstacle we face is the insistence by some that whatever is proposed, it will be, it will not be approved by the California Coastal Commission. The specter of the Coastal Commission's disapproval results in primarily killing the innovative solutions that we have potential, that, which we have potential to restore and restain, retain sand on our beaches. Ironically, the very beaches that the Coastal Act was, was implemented for." And let's just play this. This is from the Kate Buckleberry. Now, can we get the volume on this? Zab, I got you.
I talked to somebody from your office who said that she, we can get the volume on this. Because it's really important.
Here.
From the Director of the Coastal Commission.
You've got 30 seconds.
There's not currently an application in front of the commission that I'm aware of, but it is a, it's a, it's an issue that that community has been looking into. You know, what, they've lost a lot of sand on their beaches. How are they going to maintain them? It's an ongoing discussion. The community's having, we've been having it with them. I actually spoke to the folks that came in to speak today. So we will be continuing to work with the city and encourage their creativity, frankly. I was, I think that the way they're approaching it, they did a big contest to come up with different ideas. And it's exactly the approach that we want people to take, to bring all the ideas to the table as we're trying to figure out how we adapt to seal the rice. So I just want to say that. There's nothing in front of the commission immediately, but we're encouraging all the work that's been, that's being done in Oceanside, and look forward to looking at a breadth of proposals at some point in the future on how to adapt that community to seal over rice.
Thank you very much. Dave Keck, followed by Richard Newton, followed by George Gardner.
I'm Dave Keck, resident of the airport community. And I want to thank you again for the opportunity to address the mayor and the city council and all the staff. I'm here in opposition to the Eddie Jones Warehouse. I've been doing a lot of research on it. Some of the documents that you'll receive from the city are a summary, but getting into the weeds, and specifically getting into the traffic studies, there's at least three of them out there currently, each of them over 300 pages long. So if you want to go down a rabbit hole, that's a good place to start. What is interesting in these is that it's pointed out that the level of service that's going to happen with the, that we currently have, is rated a C through an E, and that means about 71% to 78% of our road capacity in or around 78 in this, this project, as what the current status is. With this project completed, it's going to drop to an E and an F, F being the lowest. That's 85 to 101%. When it's projected out to 2030 in accordance with the codes, it's going to be a D and an F, or 87 to 101% capacity of our roads will be met. It's currently, in accordance with the rules, the way it's written, it's, even though it's having a negative impact, community developer is willing to pay his fair share, which is anywhere from 2.5 to 5.8%, depending on which report you read, but not to exceed $100,000. I think that's a little bit of a low amount. I don't want to be duped when this comes up to you. I have to say that, please, this project is going to be harmful to our community, to now and in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. George Gardner?
Yeah, George Gardner. I figured every time I was here, we'd do this Domestic Violence Month, and we want to celebrate. And I say it's domestic violence, probably puts people out on the streets somewhere. So, May of 13, 2017, Mr. Domestic Violence...
Mr. Gardner, I'm pausing your time. Can you speak into the microphone? It's not being picked up on Zoom or KOC-T. There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we'll get to them next. Yeah, when a, basically a domestic violence felon pursued his thing and grabbed somebody by the throat, I went over to confront him. I was arrested for basically telling him that, what, that he shouldn't be doing that, after he ran the person out of their house, over to my house, came to my house, and tried to attack her again. Okay? I was arrested. It was all thrown out. He wasn't arrested, which should have been a mandatory arrest under the, your guidelines that you're supposed to have. Subsequently, July 9, I called because my wife drank too much, fell down, called the police. I was raided by, I don't know, six or eight police officers with a arrest thing, saying that the prior arrest, which was thrown out, had nothing to do with it. So this keeps coming up with this, you know, one policeman that does a stupid thing goes to the next policeman that does a stupid thing. Everybody's saying it's systemic racism. It seems to be systemic dereliction of duty under the, what, color of authority, which all of you guys are present to the authority of the people. Now, all this stuff has gone to court. Even the courts said that the last thing had nothing to do with the current affair. And so now they've charged me with what? First, they charged me with assaulting a police officer at my house on July 9, and then a resisting arrest. Oh, they threw those two out because that's a bunch of crap. Then they turn around and say, oh, you, what, you obstructed something. So now I've got a misdemeanor thing on my record. Never had nothing in my record in my life of 66 years until I came to Oceanside. So it's going to a civil suit, but you guys are the ones that are supposed to be under the authority of the people. That means color, it means agency. It doesn't mean skin color.
Thank you. Thank you. Richard Newton, followed by Justin, followed by Patrick Higuera.
Honorable Mayor Sanchez, members of the council and the public. I'm speaking off the cuff here on just a couple of things I'd like to bring up. And the first is directed to Eric Joyce. I know we've had some differences over migrants in the, being brought into the city and how those are defined. And we have a derelict executive branch in Washington, DC that is not protecting the borders, but bringing people in under asylum laws when international law is very clear that asylum seekers should go to the next adjacent country, not use that as an excuse to get into the United States. However, what I'd like to really focus on is your objection to the criticisms of these migrant waves that come in. I'd like to point out that if you're saying that we can never criticize a group of people that are engaged in a particular action, we can't criticize them about anything. They, carte blanche, they can do whatever they want. Like anybody else on the planet, they need to be held accountable to criticism for their actions. And we can disagree on whether it's right or wrong, and the federal government's letting them in. Nonetheless, it is appropriate to criticize their actions of breaching our borders and using asylum laws as an excuse to do it. That's briefly what I wanted to say on that. And then, Mayor Sanchez, I'd like to say something to you, too. I've noticed, in all the meetings I've been coming here, that oftentimes you sponsor a group, an ethnic group, and you give them awards, whether it's colonists, or Hispanic, or whatever the group, Indian group. And I'd like to point out, again, my mother was a first-generation immigrant from El Salvador. We spoke English, we assimilated, all of my cousins did, everything. We don't want to identify different groups as different groups. We're all Americans. And we want to acknowledge and honor Americans for their contributions, regardless of what group they're in. And we shouldn't specify these particular groups. If people do good things, they should be honored for that, of any ethnicity, when they come here. But to favor a particular group, to give them awards, is, strikes me as being inappropriate. I think we should allow everybody, you know, odd opportunity.
Not only for National Hispanic Heritage Month?
I beg your pardon?
Not only for, not, not even for National Hispanic Heritage Month, that many industries and organizations and governments are doing.
I, well, for example, tonight, yes.
TV, channels, I mean, everybody's doing it.
That doesn't mean it's right. We need to stand up and say we're all Americans.
I see.
And that's all.
Thank you very much. George Gardner? No, Justin, sorry. Justin. George, already did.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez and council members. Thank you for letting me speak. This is my first city council meeting that I've attended here in Oceanside. I've been a resident since 2019. My wife and I bought our first home here. We have a daughter, a one-year-old, and we live in the President's Hill neighborhood, backing up to the riverbed. On Saturday, October 14, around 7:30 at night, I was putting my daughter to bed, and I got a call from a neighbor that there was another fire back in the riverbed. I looked out the window, and I saw big flames, and they weren't that far from my house. Again, okay? I have multiple times since my time, since my, I bought that house, had to call on homeless encampments back there. And the fact that they were having fires, and nothing's been done. That exact camp that that fire started from that day was one that I had reported multiple times to Code Enforcement and to OPD. I've called, I talked to Louis over at Code Enforcement, and I got to tell you, the guy's very responsive. He's, he's the guy that's supposed to be in charge of that area, the riverbed, and that's supposed to be his territory. I've called him numerous times. He always gets back to me. But his, his response to me is that his hands are tied and he can't do anything about it. At what point are we going to do something to eradicate the, the trees, or the homeless, and the homeless that are over there? The trees are giving them how, you know, shelter, and it's a fire hazard to my home over there. I'm having trouble getting my house insured, as far as, I can't get another provider to provide me homeowner's insurance. So I'm stuck with a high premiums, and I can't get anyone else. No other providers will even provide homeowner's insurance because of the fires that keep happening back there. So I want to say, these compound, these encampments are detrimental to our natural resources in the riverbed, and to the safe quality of life for my family.
Thank you.
The homeless continue to come into my neighborhood. They steal their, and I understand, I don't want to be insensitive to their situations, but back there is causing now a problem, a safety issue for my family. They're coming into our house, into our property.
So are you talking about flood insurance, or are you talking about?
Fire, for fire.
For fire.
That's right.
Has, has, has a house ever caught fire?
There was before I bought the house. They said within a year, one of my neighbor's houses had caught fire and had to get a lot of damage. Two occasions in the last two years, I've had to be back there spraying hoses.
We have a Assistant City Manager, Michael Gossman, who's in the back. He'll go ahead and talk with you.
Great.
Thank you very much. Next is Patrick Higuera, followed by Rose Higuera, followed by Joe Hill.
Thank you. Just want to read you something out of Reuters. "Overwhelmed by record numbers of illegal nationals from around the US, border officials have released about 1,400 illegal nationals in the beach town of Oceanside. Twice-a-day customs and border protection vans, buses drop off illegal nationals at the Tresn Center in Oceanside, a city of about 172,000. They are volunteers, there are volunteers and welcomeers who welcome these people. Most of the streets, most of the street releases take place in Oceanside and El Cajon. California has been overwhelmed with homeless, and now we are accepting illegal nationals. Are we going to choose these over our homeless Americans? I hope not. The makeshift services centers orienting illegal nationals to find them temporary shelters in Oceanside. Last week, about 65 men largely from the Western Africa country of Guinea arrived in Oceanside. County Supervisor Joel Anderson stated, "We are expecting an unknown number of individuals to be released by DHS directly into our community, left at transit centers throughout the region to fend for themselves." Anderson wrote, "This is neither safe nor fair to San Diego, Oceanside, or El Cajon." So my question is this. You people of city council, you were hired to protect American, American people of Oceanside County. How are you going to do that, allowing these people in? When we're at a pace to stop, 150 of these people are, were caught as terrorists on the terrorist list, 150 of them coming across our border. How are you going to protect the American people of Oceanside County, who you said you would protect against the murderers and rapists that are going to be dropped off in Oceanside Transit Center? There is multiple, multiple offenders that have been caught here from other countries, and you guys are welcoming them with open arms. You need to stop doing that, put them on a bus, and ship them somewhere else. Because you're here to protect Oceanside Americans, not the world.
Thank you, Mr. Higuera. By the way, none of them are staying here. None of them are staying. Rose Higuera?
Okay, so I want to talk about what's happening in our Oceanside schools. So we have Max Disbizidi, who's the LGBT director, who's training our Oceanside teachers on how to sexualize minors. Our newest council member, Robinson, wants to give a pot shop permits to further degrade and hurt kids and families. Pot shops equals blood money. Superintendent Vitale has lied. She is limiting stakeholders and parents to three minutes for all 50-plus agenda items. She lies about terminating the KOC-T live videotaping. There's no transparency, and there is no integrity or character. Let me show you one of the things that we're trying to do. We're trying to get the filth out of schools. We've tried for two and a half years to get porn out of schools for minors. It has no place. We want politics out, and we want the porn out. That's all we're asking. Bring the grades up. They are dismal in the tank. Eric Joyce, you're the liaison to schools. You're proclaiming to all that the US has invisible borders. You're feeding 500 illegal, unvetted, unvaxxed infiltrators and invaders with our tax money. You took a constitutional oath to protect the citizens of Oceanside, but you are not doing that. You are actively hurting not only our city, our county, our state, but our country. This is America. We have borders to protect people on that side and people here as well. I got an email that was addressed to you, City Attorney Mullen. It says J.M.U.L.L.E.N@ci.Oceanside.ca.us, and Peter Weiss, P.W.E.I.S.S@Oceanside.ca.org. And it's asking you to write a legal brief for the Oceanside School Board to take away our First Amendment rights. I did send an email to that account, and it did go through. So you're saying that you did not get this email?
There's not, we don't talk back and forth.
I'd be happy to give you a copy of that.
All right. Thank you very much. Joe Hill, followed by Eileen Costa, followed by Jimmy Knott.
Let's do a 180. Sometimes our best intentions turn into nightmares. Just a couple of blocks away from the proposed Eddie Jones Warehouse, we've already approved adding 667 more houses and 300-room hotel, and one of the best destination resort supposedly in Southern California with a wave park. Ocean Camp, right? That's, that's what's coming. However, two blocks away, a two-long, a two-block-long, 550,000-square-foot warehouse, with 24 hours-a-day truck traffic in that area, is proposed. And I think that's the last thing that we would ever want up there. Earlier this month at another meeting, the revenue the city supposedly is going to get from that project, if it goes through, is $72,000 a year, and a ton of unknown future problems worth, I'm not sure it's worth the grief. You guys have always been pretty good about looking out for the community when there's a crappy discretionary project right before you. So let's hope that if this ever gets to the council, that you do the right thing and turn this thing down. It's, it'll just be a disaster. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Costa?
Mayor Sanchez, City Council members, my name is Eileen Costa. I'm Oceanside resident. I am in strong opposition to the location... I am in strong opposition to the location of the Eddie Jones Warehouse manufacturing and distribution facility. I believe this location will cause a severe traffic impact on the 76th, and adding the traffic from the Ocean Camp development will add to the problem. The large number of trucks, I believe it's 590, at all hours of the day and night, and the forklifts that will be needed to load the trucks with their backup noises and sounds will destroy the peace and the quiet sought at the pe- from the people who go to the Prince of Peace Abbey. It will cause immeasurable problems to the Abbey. Emergency vehicles may be delayed in reaching people in nearby houses, and in an emergency or fire situation, an evacuation will be delayed. I am requesting the city council to request the Fire Department, or Police Department, or whoever's supposed to do it, I think it's the Fire Department, to plan an emergency evacuation plan for the housing developments in Oceanside. There are no evacuation plans. I know in Oceana, there are two exits. They're building, planning a 77 apartment, and the church is adding workshops, and there's only two streets next to each other. If people in the apartment house and in the church need to get out in an emergency, I'm afraid the people in Oceana are never gonna be able to get out, because they'll be behind them. Many developments only have one road to be used as an exit. This is really an unsafe situation, and I urge the council to look into this and to come up with an evacuation plan.
Thank you very much. Jimmy?
Mayor, council members, Jimmy Knott, 127 Sherry Lane. I have to apologize to the council and the city, because last Thursday, I heard, thanks to the mayor and Assistant City Attorney Hamilton, that for information that was not posted onto the city's website, that the city zoning article 19, Mobile Home Park District, was void, ineffective, and changed due to SB 330 on January 2018 and the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. They preempted our city code. So, four years, who are four years? There was no annotation or asterisk onto the code or in the city documents to inform the reader that the law had been changed. So, the public, like myself, read our code and assumed it was active, it was legal, it was forward. We need to inform the public when our codes become null, void, or ineffective. Otherwise, you misinform the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Max Dispositi, followed by Karen Tomlinson.
Good evening again, Max Dispositi, Oceanside resident. Perhaps we are going to place a presentation later on about the immigration drops that we had in Oceanside. I wanted to speak to it, even though two minutes is not gonna do it, but first of all, debunking some of the myth about illegal immigrations and so forth. These were fully directed by the migrants that we served. In North County LGBT Curie Center Interfaith, we were the only two agency on the spot for 31 days, 12 hours a day, to serve these migrants, to send them to their destinations. Actually, I wish the city was informed, was it, was actually fully involved, but it wasn't, besides a lot of volunteer staff that participated. For, for the record, to understand, a nonprofit took, in a humble way, the honor to serve our migrants, to serve the constitutional rights of our migrants to come to our, to our cities. And our work is actually to be able to connect these folks to their family of destinations. We all have the sponsors in different cities, so that we can facilitate the transportations and avoid they could actually stay here longer, because they could. They had the right to it, they chose to. So, just a little information about that. Not only, when we're talking about human trafficking, this is how we prevent it. Many of these migrants, when we were not present, or a minute distracted, were surrounded and addressed by local traffickers to exploit the situations that they were in, because they were dropped without even knowing where they were. So, we cooperated with the Border Patrol. We are proud that we've done so, to make sure that these people are going, and were going safe home. There weren't 1,400, there actually were more than 2,000, as a matter of fact. So, everything that's been read was not really truly false news. But I wanted to perhaps have the opportunity in the future to inform the council in the details about the amazing experience that we had and how our community outside has stepped in to support our human beings. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Karen Tomlinson, followed by Wendy, Wendy Bravo, Dolan.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members and staff. Thank you for letting me speak here today. I'll be brief. Most of you have known George, myself, and our employees for four years now. We have been self-advocating on behalf of Medleaf, trying to make the best path forward to stay afloat in an uncertain industry. In January of this year, we brought forward the conversation of allowing a pilot program for cannabis storefront or preference for storefront. We handed over research showing a path forward and spoke on other options. On April 19th, council members voted four to one to direct staff to come back in 120 days with a recommendation of two storefronts with options around giving preference to existing non-storefront licensed retailers such as ourselves. We left that day feeling elated, like we had finally moved the needle forward. So, understandably, on October 4th, we were devastated after reading the staff recommendation to give zero preference to existing non-storefront license holders, and then also to do a lottery for a type, for two Type 10 licenses where applications need to only meet a minimum evaluation criteria to enter a lottery. We ask you today to please stick to your vote and the language around your vote. There have been more than a dozen cities that have given preference to an existing license holders. There is a pathway, and it's more than fair. Lastly, I'm pleading with you today to see us as law-abiding, good citizens of your city of Oceanside. We're small business owners, owners fighting to keep our doors open and our employees employed. I ask you to put aside any perceptions around cannabis and really see us for the small business owners that we are. We are no different than the other 100 small business owners in Oceanside here, trying to prosper and take care of our employees along the way. It is more than fair to be able to offer consideration to a local business. Why, why would you wanna bring in outside people when you have good operators here? Thank you so much.
Wendy Bravo-Dolan, followed by Alyssa Montiveros.
Good evening. Yeah, thank you for this opportunity to speak. As I mentioned before, I am an oblate at Prince of Peace Abbey. There are hundreds of us throughout the world, also, who attend regularly worship services at Prince of Peace Abbey, along with thousands of worshippers, local, U.S., and all over the world, who visit the Abbey when they're here in town and stay at the retreat center there that the monks operate. I'd like to talk to you for just a moment about light pollution and noise pollution. Now, the Prince of Peace Abbey, which is 1,500 feet of the proposed Eddie Jones Project, offers retreats to refresh spiritually, and the surrounds of the monastery are beautiful, dark, and quiet at night, very peaceful, and you sleep like a baby. There are many who come who, to work out, you know, that could be, just to get closer to, to God, work out marital problems at the same time. How will Eddie Jones light pollution and noise pollution affect worshippers who try to pray in silence? How will Eddie Jones light pollution and noise pollution affect the peace and quiet of families and their children? The elderly, people working at home. How will people be affected by noise pollution that are also part of the population of, of animals and wildlife that live along the San Luis River? It's one living thing. In fact, how will the light pollution and noise pollution affect the peace and quiet of families and their children? The elderly, people working at home. Consider the forklifts. Consider the backup alarms. Consider that it's a seven, 24/7/365 plan that, for 114 trucks. What's that gonna look like and sound like? It's scary. Please, please act compassionately when you go to review this project and decide upon it.
Thank you. Alyssa Montiveros?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Alyssa Daniell Montiveros, and I'm a San Diego native and local Oceanside District 2 resident. I'm coming to talk today about the city council hearing on the voting of the storefronts of, of the licensing storefronts we are open and willing to give our operators here locally. I have been a witness to the growth of Medleaf in specific. My background is actually in cannabis. I've been working in the industry for over 10 years, and I also am a co-owner of a cannabis sales agency and business development firm. So, with that said, I have a few points here that I'd like to point out from the moment we discussed about voting on offering licensing to current operators. Councilmember Wise, you said, "I'll make a motion that we go along with what was presented, with the exception of instead of four, we go to two businesses and see if there's a way of giving preference to the local businesses that have already been here." Councilmember Joyce, you said for me, if I could offer a friendly amendment that would bring back options on whether or not that, but I will like to know a full scope of what that actually means on a business level. I'm okay with moving forward with the staff's full information, options on those. Councilmember Robinson, you said you were a little more in line with Mr. Wise had in mind to start, and that you were looking to, looking at how we could give preference to our existing license holders. Councilwoman Berkeem, you said you were more in line with what Mr. Wise had to speak on. So, I'm concerned that the recommendation did not come back from the staffers or our existing operators, considering that currently Medleaf is considered a C9, which is a delivery-only. And there is countless cities within our state who've grandfathered in current operators. So, I feel like we're missing the mark here when it comes to allowing current operators that we are about to grandfather in. I'd like to finish my point, please. With that said, I believe that we should offer a position to Medleaf as a retailer in giving them the opportunity, because may I add, their taxation-
Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you. All right. Kathleen Della Porter, followed by Francesca Galvan.
Okay, I take her time too.
I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll get my time, bye. Not here? You'll give her her time. Okay, that was a joke.
Kathleen Della Porter, did you wanna speak? Did you wanna speak, ma'am? Oh, I'm sorry. Francesca Galvan.
Okay.
Sorry, my apologies. I guess the other person is not here?
No, I'm just as confused as you are, but I just want to say that I am disappointed, because I have to do so many things. One of them, I was talking to Mexican, Mexican-American, that do not want to participate. They do not want to be American citizens. They do not want to have the power that our citizens have. So, I said, "Okay, I'll go this time," but I want to ask you, if you allow me to say this in Spanish, because most of them is Spanish, and so that we can start somewhere. Is that okay? Thank you.
Are you, are you talking about what again? I'm sorry.
My, my item was the item that you did not let me talk. They blocked me over there, and then when I asked you, you just say no, just because, and they vote against us. You did not have the time to, and I hope you're not taking my time, because this is your time. You did not let me talk, because you took a decision that is concerning us, and that is not a, a government. We are not citizens, and this is why I've, one of the topics that, and I do not, I'm really bad at talking, but I want to try to organize my, what we talk. So, what I said that I was going to transmit, what we talk, these friends of ours, you know, they're Mexicans. I, and I said, I was going to say that in Spanish, so they can understand that. So, I'm asking you if I can say that in Spanish.
Okay, so, you wanna speak in Spanish? Absolutely, you're fine, yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, uno de los problemas que tenemos en la comunidad latina, en la comunidad mexicana, o méxico-americana, o quiero decir americana, descendientes de mexicanos o latinos, es que somos ignorados, somos usados. Yo en la agenda, oh, nosotros en la agenda, cuando empezamos a ver, esto no es mi tiempo. Este, empezamos a ver que-
No, Stevie, you can give her another two minutes.
Que empezamos a ver que ahí aparecimos siempre nosotros, las minorías, la gente de color, mi apellido, los latinos, los imposibles, necesitados latinos. Traigo una salsa para decir que soy latino y quiero a los pobres que son latinos, que son inimigrantes y que son ilegales. So, eso estábamos hablando. So, rehusamos que ustedes hagan y votado una agenda que no, no nos incluye sin siquiera escucharnos. No, no queremos vivir como los chinos apretados. Nosotros venimos de, de países en donde hay un rancho, vacas, pollos, y gallinas. Entonces, no, no queremos una densidad de eso, porque esto es el BBG de Pelosi. Esto es la agenda del Nuevo Orden Mundial. En todo esto, este, estoy hablando de Oceanside, Estados Unidos. ¿Quién es el que se fue a regresar uno a México porque andaba vendiendo drogas? ¿Quién es el que se murió como homosexual? Un ilegal. Los niños de estos ilegales que yo traducía para ellos. ¿Por qué? Porque hay una persona que se llama Max Dispositi, que es multitasking. Este señor es human trafficker, es promotor de LBGT bajo de, qué bueno? Qué bueno, entonces, pues no lo estoy ocultando. Entonces, ¿cuál es la función de gobierno? ¿Cuál es la responsabilidad de una alcaldesa latina para con su gente? ¿Por qué nos venden? ¿Por qué nos, nos tratan como esclavos? So, decimos esto. Necesitamos una respuesta, señor alcaldesa, de los, de los puntos que nosotros queremos. No, nos tienen con consultar. No pueden decidir por nosotros ni tratarnos como esclavos. No más vendedores de drogas, no más promotores de LBGT.
Gracias, gracias.
¿Me va a dar la, la respuesta, por favor, en escrito?
Gracias, es todo. Gracias.
Sí?
Gracias, es todo.
Okay, gracias.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? There was one person, Kathleen Della Porter? No? Okay. So, that's it for our 18 comments, 18 people. Next, our general council member comments. Any, councilmember Wise?
Yes, I just wanna report that at the last Economic Development Commission meeting, they took, took up the issue of the makeup of the commission, and hopefully we'll see the bylaw changes coming in the near future. So, they went along partly with the mayor's recommendation. They're dropping the manufacturing and distribution from three to one, and they're gonna, recommending to add a community at large and add a new category for a nonprofit. So, at some point, we'll see those bylaw changes and hopefully then be able to fill those slots.
Thank you very much. Did you wanna say something? I saw you heading for your light.
Just again, because I feel like it needs to be said when we have comments-
Councilmember Joyce.
Thank you. Accusing folks of being human traffickers, those are just ridiculous and really hurtful, and I just want people to really think about what they're saying and not, and come here for the purpose that you came for, and then speak to what we're talking about here, and this isn't a space for that kind of hateful rhetoric.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't know where that was heading. I thought I heard, "You didn't let me speak," and I wondered- I thought I heard, "You didn't let me speak," and I wondered what it was about, and she's talked about density, so I thought, "Oh, that's probably because the public comment period had ended except for if you signed up." So I thought she wanted to speak about that, and so I thought I'd give her the time. She wanted to speak in Spanish. And generally, when there's a language issue and you have an interpreter, they usually double the time so that you have, you know, you can actually hear a two-minute kind of order. But I don't know, she did take a person's, accused someone, he's still here. "Max, I'll afford you a time to respond if you wish to respond." Usually, usually the comments are meant to us, and it's certainly up to us to ask for a point of personal privilege, and so it's up to us to decide that or not. Certainly, we have the free speech, you know, but Max, because I did not anticipate that was going to happen, I'm sure you didn't either, I'll give you a chance to speak.
I appreciate that, Mayor. Just briefly, we're all tired. This is becoming unsafe for a lot of us. This is not the first time my name is associated to groomers, sexualizing kids. It's been going on at the Oceanside School District over and over for a year, and it's becoming violent towards myself and the staff at the LGBT Center. It's very serious. I will forward that to the FBI. I speak Spanish, I know exactly what she said. Calling me a human trafficker, it's, first of all, they're humanizing for everyone--
Outrageous.
--to hear that. I don't know, I appreciate the freedom of speech. I'm not here to censor anyone, but there must be a limit, because this is violence going out, and we are seeing them coming back in our own homes. So I'm extremely concerned about these personal attacks. We can be divisive about a lot of things, but the personal attack are really concerning. And that's why they destroy the environment at the Oceanside School District. I couldn't even go without police escorting there, because people are showing up on this council that are present right now in this room, have been doing this over and over and over. So I'm very, I apologize, I'm very concerned, because I'm not concerned about the one I'm per se, but the repeating of the offense to the humanized people to a point that becomes a violent act. And I'm concerned about my safety and the people, my staff, or the people who are doing the work every day. So I finished that. I appreciate the patience of everyone, and I respect your work, each one of you, but this is crossing the line, is becoming really unheard of, and I'm very offended, but thank you.
Thank you, Max. All right. So did you have any other comments? All right. Well, I did have a couple of comments, and I really hope that we can, you know, like, move away from any kind of hate speech and hopefully speak to each other respectfully, and hopefully we can come to, you know, with respect to city issues, some kind of a consensus. But we will not meet again until November 1st, 2023, before I adjourn. There are a couple of events coming up. We have the, ooh, what is it? It's the Dia de los Muertos coming up, this coming Sunday, which is really, really fun. You got to come. It's, I think it's 10 to 5. It's great food, great costumes, just great music. This is something that Main Street Oceanside has partnered with local communities. You'll see some classic car exhibitions, lowrider cars, really, really cool. And another thing that Main Street Oceanside is doing, of course, is the return of the Haunted Market, which is Thursday, October 26th, so that's a week from tomorrow, 5 to 9. Trick or treat for the kids, 12 and under, and special scary entertainment contests at the main stage. Excuse me. For example, costume parade at 6:00 p.m., the evil laugh and blood-curdling scream contest at 8:00 p.m. And actually, in between all of that, there's something really, really special that I hope you will come and see, and that is that Main Street Oceanside is partnering with Poseidon Foundation, which is about skateboards, skate, you know, supporting kids through this really, really wonderful athletic venture. And this is a meet and greet between 5:00 and 6:30. Right here on Peerview Way, they're going to close it, they're going to put an inflatable ramp, and so we've got adaptive skaters from the Olympics coming, right? And it's so, so cool that, you know, as you know, the Olympics started accepting skateboarding as an Olympic event, Olympic sport. And so now we have, in Oceanside, we are actually being looked at for, by adaptive skaters, skateboarders, and that's really, really fantastic. So please come to March 26th, excuse me, March, to October 26th, Main Street Oceanside's Sunset Market, lots of things going on, you know, for the Halloween, for the kids, for the family, really, really fun kind of zone. And then plus, you get to meet some really, really cool and spectacular athletes for the adaptive skate and the exhibition, please. That's from 5 to 6:30, right here. They're going to close the street. So having said that, I love you all, okay? Let's do that with a lot of love, and I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting to Wednesday, November 1st at 3:30. Thank you.